Welcome, everybody, to the board meeting of Wednesday, September 13th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. Welcome, everybody, to the Calaveras County Board Board Meeting, Calaveras County Water District Board Meeting. It's Wednesday, September 13th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Becca, can you take roles? Becca, quiet, please. Becca, take role.
Director Cicada?
Here.
Director Thomas?
I'm here.
Director Davidson?
Here.
Director Underhill?
Here.
President Raderman?
Here. The item item two on our agenda is public comment. At this time, members of the public may address the board on any non-agendized item. That's non-agendized item. The public is encouraged to work through staff to place items on the agenda for board consideration. No action can be taken on matters not listed on the agenda. Comments are limited to three persons, three minutes per person. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment of something that's not on the agenda tonight? That'd be the the rate hearing and the cost of study service is on the agenda tonight. So if it's something besides that, please approach the podium, provide your name and where you're from.
I will provide my name today, even though I don't have to under the brown man. My name is Carl Stotin from West Point, Carlos, and I know all of you, and I'm proud to know. Never have I seen a better group that works so well together than with you folks. You epitomize what a good public servant should be, an elected official.
Thank you.
I don't see that much. The Lord was coming to get me. I can certainly speak up for you. Across town, we don't have such a thing as a good board, so it is really a pleasure to see all of you. One thing that that really touches me is that you're open to speaking to anybody. You take emails for anybody. You, if somebody stops you on the street, you'll talk to them, provide information. If if somebody calls you, you take their phone call, and you are very polite, and you provide the information. If you don't have the information, you go to staff, and they provide the information, but you get it to the public. You are members of our community. That's where you come from. You don't take very much money to be here. I think $120 a meeting, maybe. And that speaks volumes in itself.
Hi, baby.
That speaks volumes in itself, that you you basically donate your time. And I
Hey, 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 please, be respectful of his comments, please. Thank you.
And this, well, this is the reason I'm saying this now, is because a lot of here people are here angry, and I can't talk about that item at this time.
Okay, go ahead. Non-agenda, hi, okay. My name is Lauren Moore. I'm a resident of Valley Springs. I just wanted to come up there and say, I appreciate you guys for showing up. I know, so I'm not a general item, so I will be speaking out against what we did today, and I want to thank you guys for showing up.
Use your mics. Everyone, use your mics.
Huge.
I was just telling you, if you're guys are transparent, and if there's anything you can contribute.
We are in the room. You're gonna have to unmute that.
I have a lot of points, so. So I wanted to talk to you guys about just right now is the transparency of how you guys are relaying the information to our citizens. And that was at the last hearing in the meeting. You guys had a set set plan. Step six was a public hearing. We didn't know what happened with step one through five. We were told it was via Facebook. I'm 28. I don't have a Facebook page. And so for us, I think a lot of this is that we were just really shocked and very surprised. And you guys know inflation rates, that you guys know everything. It's like some of these bills on fixed income comes, I'm getting into all of it. What I want to say is, I think the way you guys can answer it is continuing the conversation with the community and being able to have us access this information.
Hey, hey, wait, can you hear anything out there?
Yes, you're done.
Wait, this, this is not a meeting until we can hear it out here. Relax, they have, we're not gonna have yelling from that next step. Please, we are working on it. Say it twice. We're working on it right now.
I think that that's maybe we should get the sound system up and ready. I just wanted to say, I know it's on the agenda. I know, but please, if you guys can relay the information in a more steadfast way and in a more approachable way.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your patience. Thank you. Thank you, Damon, Dylan, and everyone else, Jesse, everyone else that worked on that. Okay, we're gonna continue the board meeting. We're still in session. Sorry for the delay and the technical issues. We're gonna open the public hearing. Does the the public hearing is is open? The order we're gonna go in, if you have a copy of the of the agenda, is the, we're gonna do a presentation for first, a short presentation. I think three people are gonna are gonna speak. And then we're gonna open the public hearing. And at that time, we're gonna ask people to come to the mic. The mic, I, is it by, can you hear me outside? Okay, all right. Okay, so I I'll, I'm just gonna try and pull this microphone a little bit closer and see if we can do it, do a little bit better. Okay, when we open the public hearing, we're gonna do a presentation from staff. We're gonna have a couple of people talk. And then we're gonna open, open for a public comment, but let me just kind of go through the process with you. In order to be counted, written protest letters must be submitted to the board clerk before the close of the public hearing. Public hearing is open. At the close of public hearing, we'll notify everybody. We're gonna take a break at that time to count the, to finish counting the protest letters. For the protest to be successful, fifty fifty percent plus one of impacted property owners must submit verified protest. For water, that means 6,690 protests. Currently, as of 4:00 PM today, we had 3,560. For wastewater, the number that is required is 2,511. As of 4:00 PM today, we had 1,526. After the public hearing is closed, we will take a short break to to have the board clerk count the protests that come in during during the meeting here. For people who submitted their protest letters in advance, if you want to verify that your protest letter is has been counted and is here, a staff person will be at the customer service window in the lobby to assist you. Or if you're online and you want to do the same thing, you can email customerservice@customer service at ccwd.org. It's no spaces, customer service. See, we're gonna, comments are limited to three minutes per person. To ensure everyone has an opportunity to make a comment, we will not be responding to every everybody's comment, but we will try and wait till the end to provide responses for for items that need responses. We will take public comment from people here in person first, then allow people online to comment. If you are online and you'd like to make a comment, please use the raised hand function, and I will call on people in the order that their hand is raised. They actually just appear in that order on the on the screen here. And please, please line up behind a podium to make make a public comment. But before we start that, we're gonna do a short presentation. And people with mobility limitations, that's what the the mic was for. We're gonna try and have someone bring it to you so so you could actually actually speak from your chair, but that may not work. That may not work tonight because that was a big problem with our feedback. And it, but everyone else, just please line up behind the comment when, behind the podium when that time comes. Again, the only thing we're gonna be doing between now and then is is have a short presentation. So we're gonna go ahead and start with the Okay, so before we start the presentations from staff, we'll work on those speakers in the lobby real quick. We're very sorry. This is happening with this delay. Well, yeah, yeah, it was, all the trial runs earlier today worked, worked fine. It's a just a glitch. Are we ready? Does everyone in the lobby hear me? Can you get a sign from the lobby that you got sound in there? Okay, all right, we're gonna continue with the public public hearing. We're gonna start with short presentations, and Jeff just promised me a short presentation from staff. Go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, members of the public. The item before you today. Move this so I can get the mic closer. I am
Okay.
The item before you tonight, this evening, is a public hearing on the proposed water and wastewater adjustments with the authorizing ordinance included in your agenda package. As an independent special district, CCWD must establish rates adequate to support its operations and infrastructure. This rate structure, a great study under the guidelines of Proposition 218, was performed by IB Consulting, which includes Habib Aisek, Andrea Bowling, and Lauren DeMaien, who are joining us online this evening. It is a common practice in the water industry to use expert consultants for rate studies. The rate studies identified funding deficiencies in the district's water and wastewater operations. These deficiencies necessitate increasing both water and wastewater rates. Your board reviewed the requirements and various rate design proposals, provided feedback, and at the July 12, 2023 board meeting, your board directed staff to proceed with the proposed five-year water and wastewater rate model. The proposed rates were provided to our customers via Prop 218 notices that were mailed to every property owner on July 27, 2023. Since October 2022, the district has held 14 publicly noticed finance committee and board meetings to address the funding requirements for the district's water and wastewater services. We held three town hall meetings earlier this year where we discussed the need for rate increases and encouraged people to participate in our finance committee and board meetings. We also held three town hall meetings after the Prop 218 notices were mailed, in addition to numerous social media posts and many other meetings and public outreach efforts. At the September 6th board meeting, at the request of your board, staff submitted their review of the proposed rate study to see if there are any way to reduce the proposed rate increases. The review concluded that rate reductions tied to operations were not feasible. Therefore, any changes would have to come from deferring CIP projects funded in whole or in part by new rate increases. Staff identified five possible CIP projects for deferral, which include the Wallace Water Tank Replacement, Jenny Lynn Tanks A, B, E, and F Rehabilitation, Big Trees Pump Stations four and five replacement, the Lock and Tent a Bio Lack Clarifier UV Improvements, and the Huckleberry Lift Station Improvements. The deferral of these projects does lower the proposed water and wastewater rate increases, for which Habib Aisek will provide further information. The rate setting process is governed by Prop 218, which was approved by California voters in 1996. Among other changes, Prop 218 created a majority protest process, which states that 50% plus one of the impacted property owners submit letters of protest. The proposed rate increases cannot move forward. As your President Scott Raderman noted, that that of on the proposed water rate increases, there are 13,007 impacted water property owners, 50% plus one is 6,505. As of today, before we counted and are counting the protest letters are submitted here today at this public hearing, there is just over 3,500 protest letters.
Okay, go. Please, 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 just be courteous. You'll have a chance to speak. There's no, don't have, oh, please just be courteous. Thank you. Yeah.
Wow.
In, in, in with the proposed water rate increase, there is 5,020 impacted property owners, and there are not sufficient protest letters submitted to meet the 50% plus one. If there are no questions, I will turn over the presentation to Habib Aisek of IB Consulting, who will review the cost of service study and proposed water and wastewater rates.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, Habib.
Getting the board and district's constituency. I don't have the ability to share my screen, so I'm not sure if that's gonna be on your side.
Hang on one second. We're, we're working on the on your sound. We can barely hear you. Hang on a second. Or go ahead and keep talking, but don't say anything important.
Hello, hello, hello. Let me turn up my device as well. Let me see. One moment. Let me know if this is any better. Can you hear me better?
Yes. Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead and please start over. Thank you, Habib.
Yeah, no problem. I was gonna do a very brief presentation, probably take around five minutes. But I can't share my screen, so I don't know if that was gonna be projected on your end, and then I just indicate when I need the slide to change. My my share screen is not enabled. Were you able to hear me?
Yeah, she's working on sharing sharing her screen. Becca is sharing her screen with you right now, so or what he suggested was that we run it here, and he'll tell us when to change the slide. Did that work? Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Go ahead, Becca. We'll put the, put your slideshow, your your presentation on on the screen, and then you just indicate when we turn the turn the slide. Go go ahead with the with your presentation. Okay, here it comes.
All right, thanks so much. Go ahead. Next slide. So first thing I'm gonna do is go through the Water Enterprise. I'm gonna go through the your current financial position, based on current rates, the review of that, and then the proposed financial plan. So we always look at the where, how you're sitting financially, based on your current rates moving forward without any increases. Go ahead, next slide. And what we want to see is positive net income. You do have bonds, so you need to make sure you comply with your bond covenants, which is a certain percent of debt coverage. We want to fund your capital plan and then meet your reserve target. So right now, the operating, the water operating position, this would be the first year where it would show that it's running a deficit or projected deficit by the end of this fiscal year that just started. So the black trend line going across is your rate revenues, and the red dash line going across is your expenses. Granted, you want your revenues to be over your expenses. You do have reserves right now that could absorb some of this, but none, there's no positive income coming in to fund your capital plan. Next slide. And here's your capital plan that is in the cost of service report. This shows your total amount per year, and then how it's being funded, based on existing funds that are available. The orange is capacity fees, which is revenue recover from developers, and those are could be used for very specific purposes for projects that are expanding the capacity of the system. You also have some grants, which is in 2024. That's gray. The district has secured some grants. You do have also existing debt that was issued a little while ago that is funding a majority of the projects in the early years, which is that violet. And then the remainder is the amount that needs to be funded by rates, which is the dark purple. So even the dark purple, that's a pretty significant amount of revenue that of capital spending that needs to be funded by rates or reserves. Next slide. So with that, really not having any net income.
Please keep it down.
Really not having much net income to go to capital spending. That means you're gonna be utilizing your reserves, and your reserve balance is already below your minimum requirement based on industry standards. And then this shows the impact of your capital spending, how it will affect your, basically your any fund balance. So you definitely need to adjust revenue, adjust your rates to be able to fully fund your capital and maintain healthy reserves. Next slide. So with our review, we want to eliminate the ongoing operating deficit that is projected to start this year. You also have debt coverage that you have to meet 125% of that deck of the debt payments at every year. You want to continue with your repair replacement projects and replenish and maintain the healthy reserves. Next slide. So then, looking at this on the left side, one of the primary drivers of the first year is meeting your bond coverage. You have to get to 125%. And to do so, you have, you need to do a 22% increase on your rates, and that's after you actually utilize your rate stabilization reserve, where you're gonna use what's been built up of 520,000 to buy down the principal of what's due in fiscal year 24, this fiscal year. In doing that and increasing the rates, you're able to meet that coverage and and hit a coverage rate of 131. And then also to fund your capital, we're also anticipating the use of debt in '25, '26 to be able to fund your capital while rate revenue increases over time, to then be able to fund your capital plan on a pay-as-you-go basis. Next slide. So this are the revenue adjustments that have been in the notice that is related to the proposed rates. Go ahead. And then here's your operating position. Now, that black trend line is sloping upward to go to be above your operating expenses. I'm also showing a line showing your debt coverage where you hit the 131 in 2024, and then it continues to increase. So now there's not an issue with debt coverage. And then the gray bars represent the increased income over your operating expenses that then could go towards your capital spending and rebuild your reserves. Next slide. Same capital plan, but now you see additional amount of debt to, so you have now debt proceeds to fund your capital. And then only the last year is where now it's gonna transition to pay-as-you-go through rates and reserves. Next slide. Then here's your new fund balance, projected fund balances. The uptick in '25 and '26 is from the proposed debt proceeds to fund your capital. And because that gets put into your capital replacement fund, and then you draw down on it, but then we want to make sure we continue to maintain a balance that's over the minimum requirement, which is reflected by the red trend line going across. Next slide. So then with those proposed revenue adjustments, these are the rates. Click again. And majority of your customers, go ahead, click one more time. Next slide. Are right here. There are five eights. 13,231 of all your customer accounts are in the lowest meter size of five eights. So that's pretty much all residential. Next slide. And then with the variable rates, your current rates are four tiers, and that's being transitioned to a three-tiered rate structure. And then these are the proposed rates on the variable side, residential three tiers, non-residential irrigation or uniform. And your, your variable rates recover 25% of your total revenue needs, whereas your fixed charges recover 75% of your need. Next slide. Then I'll do the same thing with wastewater. Go ahead. Go ahead, one more. So with wastewater, it's a, it's a little bit more healthy. It has positive net income. It basically doesn't break even in 2028, and you might actually still break even because you might outperform our projections and our assumptions, but this is, it has a net income that could course, go towards capital spending. Next slide. And then with your capital plan for wastewater, it's not as significant as water. And then, but that existing debt that you have also funded a portion of wastewater projects. You do have a grant as well for wastewater that you secured. That's in 2024. And then we're also continuing to use capacity fees for the projects that are authorized to be, that may be funded by capacity fees. Next slide. So with this one, you, even though you have less capital spending, you also have less revenue that comes in from wastewater in total. You have a reserve balance that's below your minimum, and again, showing, continue with the capital plan. This shows the reflection of your fund balance and how you'll be impacted over the five years. Next slide. So with wastewater, you do have positive net income, but it is decreasing if rates aren't adjusted. Your reserves are already below your balance, and we want to make sure that we rebuild that and go over that amount and maintain it. So we're gonna show some adjustments for the wastewater utility. Next slide. So wastewater, go ahead. We are making sure we generate positive net income. We need 14% adjustments, but then, once we do that for for four years, it ratchets down to 3%. Next slide. Debt coverage is not an issue with wastewater, even at your existing rates, because you have less debt in your wastewater than your water. This shows your proposed revenue in black increasing, and then the red dash lines you're operating. The gray bars are your net income that could go towards your capital spending and reserves. We are gonna also include debt for wastewater of 6 million, so then we could fully fund your capital plan and minimize higher increases by if we were just gonna cash fund it altogether. Next slide. So then here's your capital fund, and now there's a little bit more proceeds in that light violet in '25 and '26, and then it transitions to pay-as-you-go basis with rate revenue and reserves that are available, where you don't need any more debt. Next slide. And then with that increase of the debt issue of 6 million, that's where you see the increase from '24 to '25 goes over your minimum, and then the revenue adjustments maintains your reserve balance over your minimum after funding operating, after funding your capital plan. Next slide. And then here are the wastewater charges. It shows your current and proposed. And it shows what those charges are for the next five years. Next slide. And then one thing that we also included on here was, based on the last And then one thing that we also included on here was um based on the last meeting that uh was held last week. The board wanted to see a reduction in the capital if possible. Um staff and Jeff just mentioned what could be deferred. And we'll show those amounts, but I want to in indicate that it's not eliminated, it's deferred, which means it's not going to be in this five years, but it's going to be in the next five years. So it doesn't go away. It's just going to be pushed back or needing to adjust those future rates to accommodate those deferred capital projects. Next slide. So this now shows the fixed charges. The top was what I just presented in the previous slides. And that's uh the recommended rates that's in the cost of service report. And then below that is the fixed charges based on deferring that capital, those capital projects. So the first year, as I mentioned, in water is primarily driven by meeting your debt coverage. So even deferring those projects doesn't change the amount you need in the first year. But then it does ratchet down the adjustments in the subsequent years. So in year in twenty five instead of eighteen is twelve and twenty six is sixteen, it's thirteen instead of sixteen, so on and so forth. Next slide. And then with the variable rates with these adjustments, it then also shows a reduction in the variable rates um for the tiers. Next slide. Wastewater, we do the same approach. There's only a few projects that could be um uh deferred. So then that allows a reduction, not just in the four next in the next four years, but also the current year. Um like I said, as I said, debt coverage wasn't an issue, so we can also ratchet down twenty four by two percent. So instead of fourteens, it goes to twelves, but in twenty twenty eight, instead of three percent, uh we need adjusted to five percent. So in totality, these two combined is reducing the bi-monthly charge by approximately fifty dollars when you get to the fifth year. Next slide. And then with that, that concludes uh my presentation. As I mentioned, I was trying to be short and quick, so the public hearing can be open to the public to address the board.
Okay, thank you, Habib. The purpose of this presentation uh was was just in case you hadn't seen it before, we we had tried to present it at our uh town hall meetings. We got through some of it in some of the meetings. We did present it a couple of times here in the uh at board meetings. We don't get very many people coming to our board meetings. So not very many people saw it. So a lot of this was repeat for those of you who saw it. We got one more, one more speaker to do before we uh and we're going to ask you to and after Michael Minkler, our general manager has some comments. And then we're going to ask everybody, we're going to open the public hearing at that time and ask people to line up at the uh podium in the middle of the room. Go go ahead, Michael.
Okay, and I'll be brief. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Um and I apologize for the the technical difficulties that that we've experienced. Um as as Jeff and Habib both mentioned, the rate increases are driven by cost increases that we faced in many areas of our budget. Most impactful are the costs of um for construction of our critical infrastructure projects. They've increased in some cases doubled, even tripled uh compared to previous engineers' estimates. In the five-year financial plan, that's the basis for this proposed rate increase. We cut the capital improvement program by more than half to get it down to the ninety two million dollars of only the most critical infrastructure projects um that were included in that list. Thanks to strict oversight of our budget from our finance committee and our board, where in open public meetings, we go through every line item in the budget. Um we report on every expenditure and we review our annual audits in detail. Um so thanks to that oversight, we are running very tight budget. And we've cut all there is to cut without reducing the cost effectiveness of our expenditures or jeopardizing our operational readiness. At last week's board meeting, the board indicated willingness to consider the reduced CIP alternative that was developed that Habib just presented. Um further cuts beyond that, especially in the first three years of the rate study, would be difficult to to reconcile with the financial situation that we're in. What we have proposed is a sound five-year plan built on a lean budget with low staffing levels and salaries and benefits that are rigor- rigorously evaluated just to try to keep up with our competitors in the labor market. Thankfully, we have very talented staff throughout the organization who can do the critical work that CCWD needs to do to serve our communities. Despite all the complexities of CCWD's budgets and regulatory compliance burdens, the bottom line here is actually pretty simple. Our costs have increased significantly and rates are our primary source of revenue, so we have to raise rates to meet those costs. In the water industry, we don't have the option to simply cut services. We can't turn off the water. We can't leave hydrants without enough pressure to fight fire. We have to meet our obligations so that our communities can function and our customers have water. So if if our costs go up, our revenues have to go up too.
Thank you.
We have, I'm almost done. We have done what we can do to control costs, but we have no control over many of the cost increases that we've faced. Our aging infrastructure demands attention and we have to rise to that challenge to meet the needs of our communities. We understand our customers have already dealt with many other cost increases and we're working on ways to increase the amount of assistance that we can provide to low-income customers. But water agencies have very limited tools to address the affordability crisis that people are facing. CCWD is committed to working with other local partners to connect customers in need with the resources that that are available and to advocate for more effective assistance programs. We'll do everything we can to bring in outside sources of infrastructure funding to take pressure off of our rates. But we're only eligible for that assistance if our rates cover the cost of our operations. If we don't adopt a sufficient rate increase, we can't bring in outside sources of funding. But for now, we need to adopt a responsible rate structure that guarantees enough revenue to maintain the critical services that CCWD provides. We'd be doing our communities a disservice if we don't meet those obligations and further delay at this point would only worsen the district's financial position. Um so with that, I'll turn it back to you, President Raderman. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to open the public meeting here in a second, but but please show a little restraint and have courtesy courtesy for the person that's speaking. Yelling out from the back of the room is um i- i- is not not right. Um if you'd like to say something, please line up behind a podium and uh and make and make your comment.
Really?
Can I go now?
Okay, please go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, with the understanding.
This is three, three minutes each and uh and please go ahead.
Um my name is Patrick Roy, Valley Springs. Um with the understanding that CCWD, like everybody else right now, needs more money. Um my time here this evening is more about asking some questions and looking for some answers than anything else. Um my first question is, is the CCD CCWD, although it I think it's a private agency, does it function like a public service agency? Um yes or no?
Again, we're not going to be answering questions or addressing just thirty thirty-three minutes of uh of comments, Pat, and then we'll move on to the next person.
Okay.
Answer comments at the end.
Well, that it's this is all relative to the uh rate increase because what we have right now is a is a perceived conflict of interest because the CCWD is re- is receiving the ballots, retaining the ballots, counting the ballots, and there's no outside independent agency to to review these things that I'm aware of. In the normal tenants of government service, we are taught to avoid uh the appearance of a conflicts of conflict of interest. And right now, what I'm looking at is a flagrant conflict of interest. Is there a means to verify this vote after the fact by an outside agency?
Is that the end of your comment?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Ann McAbby, Murphy's, California. I propose that we get fifteen days, stop the meeting, get fifteen days to get the proper signatures that got confused over water and and sewer. And give us a chance to get those papers back to you and then hold a meeting. Because right now it did not go well because the confusion over the water versus sewer papers have confused the whole thing and you've you do not know the impact of the people that did. So I think you need to stop the meeting, postpone it, give us fifteen days to get that protest letter or whatever they are up to date for everybody.
All right, thank, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Well, I really hope you consider it because it's critical. We are, I'm my bottom line budget. I don't have, I I'm telling you, you're killing all of us. My my husband is seventy-six and had to go back to work. He works full-time because and we go nowhere. We live at home, we take care of our basic property, but we don't have any extra cash to do anything except pay our bills. And he's back at work at seventy-six. And that's what's happening to people left and right of us. And that's what's got to be understood, that people have hit their bottom budget too. We don't have it. What are you going to do if we can't pay our bills? So I propose that this meeting get ended, set a new date and give us a chance to get those people who got confused over the w- water versus sewer and then reconsider coming back and have the sound system tested properly so that it's not confusion for you when you're trying to get started.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We got it?
Yes.
You want?
Got it?
Yeah, I think you can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Jay, did you get the thing back? Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not computer literate.
My name is Donna Henle. I'm from Copperopolis. Thanks to all who have helped getting the word out about the CCWD proposed one hundred percent rate hike and getting protest letters signed by homeowners living within the CCWD water district. Because of delays receiving the CCWD notifications in a timely manner and other people never receiving any notifications, we were weeks behind in getting the public involved. Once the coalition was launched uh and Nextdoor took hold of the story, word spread fast. Confusion, fear, anger, sorrow filled online sites. The word of mouth took hold and volunteers were getting protest letters signed. The volunteers were beginning to hear in many who spoke to them about their circumstances. Some were crying, stating that they would lose their homes. These sentiments were repeated many, many times by men and women on sites read by the by me personally nightly into the AMs of the coalition. The stories of widows fearing the loss of their homes. Single moms or dads with children to raise on a very tight budget and asking, how am I going to feed my children? Those on disability saying, where do I go if I have to move? Sorry. And those seniors living on social security just barely scraping by. What should we tell all the people in these towns? Guess that you don't really matter. And all because of a rate hike that will cripple these families' lives. I sit or now stand before you. I sit or stand before you, heartbroken. For the families that I described to you. I promised them that I would represent them before this board. I am one of the much older seniors who have been bedridden for six years, permanently disabled on a small social security income with my disabled son and husband. I beg of you. Do not allow the proposed rate hike to go through as CCWD wants. A one-year plan with a low water rate should be a starting point. Thank you for listening and I pray that you will side with we, the people. And note, and not the CCWB one hundred rate hike. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank her for her comment first of all, her comments. There are many people that can't afford that, this rate increase. I'm from West Point. We have, we have a lot of people that are that are on the that are low income. A lot of people that are seniors. You know, somebody on social security, if there's if they're single and have never been married and the their minimum, the minimum they're making is uh is eight hundred dollars, eight hundred and nine hundred dollars maybe now. It's not much. And when you consider what what you're you're proposing, they're not going to be able to afford it even with all the public assistance that we can find. They just won't be able to afford it. It's hard to, it must be hard for staff to ask people that are that are barely scraping by to uh when they're making good salaries to uh to to put pay more. Basically, uh give up their uh give up, give up meals. It hurts me and pains me. It hurts me and pains me that this is going on. The your rate increase, what was it, twenty-two percent and then twenty-two percent? And that's in one year. That's in one year. You can't do that to these people. West Point was built. West Point was built, the system in West Point was built on federal funds, grants and state funds. Now, don't get mad at me, Mr. Jeff. He's the only one that talks back to me, either way. Don't get mad at me. But if you take state funds because of and federal funds to build a system because it's a low-income place, don't expect those people to pay for improvements, expanded services in other areas of the county that didn't, don't suffer the same pains. Just don't expect it. You 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 ethically can't do it. Ethically can't do it. There's right and wrong in this world and you have to do the right thing. Now, let me take a moment to thank staff. Mr. Minkler here. When I brought up a complaint or an issue, he saved you guys a hundred and thirty thousand dollars at least. Not going to go into what that was about. He, seven AM in the morning yesterday, he's at.
Wait, pay attention to the to the clock.
He's answering my emails.
Wrap up.
The Jeff, the only guy that talks back to me, he's still, he still helps me. Damian or I'm sorry, I always get it wrong. Damian. He's trying to bring me a, he's trying to bring me fire hydrant for my neighbor who's in a, who's in an old house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Karen Turner, Copperopolis. First of all, I would like to address the statement that you made, Mr. Raderman, about your finance meetings. If you held your meetings at times of day that people could attend, it would be more convenient and you would have more people attend. Okay, most, if not all, the people in this room work. And we cannot attend meetings at ten o'clock in the morning or nine o'clock in the morning. Second, I would like the Board of Directors to take a look at the increase in management since Mr. Minkler became your general manager. I think you need to look at that, question it and make decisions from there. You ran well prior to that. Next, you have new buildings. This building, you have the building over there. You have new um meters that still don't work well. Meters and their system that still don't work correctly. You have a portal that still doesn't work correctly. A month ago, when you had the copper meeting, you told me that it was going to be up and working. They're still not working, Mr. Minkler. A month ago, when you had the copper meeting, you told me that it was going to be up and working. They're still not working, Mr. Minkler. So, those are things that I think that you should address first before you start raising our rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. My name is Jessica Piper. I live in West Point. I'm a fairly recent move up here. I've been up the last two years. One of the things I love about West Point is the diversity. I have neighbors who are retired on fixed incomes. I have other neighbors who have lived there for five generations. It's an amazing place. When I first found out about the water rates, I was shocked. We have a vacant lot in the corner of town where the grocery store burned down twenty years ago and it's three hundred dollars a month for a water bill with nothing. Kinda didn't understand that. My real question for the board is a lack of transparency. I think we need some more transparency. I appreciate Mr. Habib's analysis of the finances and I, from what he showed, I can't argue. If the revenues are lower than the expenditures, we have a problem. But while I'm standing here, my husband texted me and said, hey, they had an emergency board meeting last week and they cut their five-year budget more than half. What's going on with that? That's not in our packet from today. If your budget was two hundred million dollars and then you said, okay, we can just do it for eighty-five. Who audited the budget expenses? So again, thank you, Mr. Habib, for auditing the finances and the cash flows. But who is looking at which of these infrastructure projects are actually critical? Who is independently trying to figure out? I mean, that's a huge amount of money, two hundred million dollars to eighty-five million dollars a week ago. I'd really like some more answers about that. And I also wanna echo one of the earlier commenters. I think maybe we need to have a follow-up meeting where we get the PA system straightened out, first of all. We can actually see the slides. The slides that were being shown are in our packets so we can refer to them because that didn't match. And there's a discussion of the actual budget items. You know, there's been a lot of comments in the room about salaries or about equipment, capital costs. Those are some big line items. When you look at that the meeting last week, uh, I think we need more transparency about that. Thank you.
Good thing, thank you.
Hello. My name is Eric Katz from West Point. We have quite a showing here. Anyway, you guys got thick skin. These are some cute charts. I mean, these are very nice. I know how to use a spreadsheet too. Someone says, create a budget for five hundred thousand. I could do it. Save budget for five million. I could do it. There's a lot of discussions of capital needs, requirements, income, expenses. I know how corporations work. I know how business works. I know how government works. Your budget fills your need. I need a Ferrari. I need a Ferrari. I need to be, oh, Lord, won't you buy me a Mercedes Benz? No, you need a used Honda. You need to, you, you need to get from A to B. Here's what I know as a fact. I got a little business downtown West Point in my commercial building. I paid three hundred thirty dollars a month for a little office. Seven hundred dollars. You wanna double? I paid a hundred some thousand dollars for that building. That means my annual water cost is a percentage of the purchase price. Here's another fact I know. My mom lives in Roseville. Roseville's got its own utility service. She has electric, water, sewer, garbage. And her monthly bill in a twenty-two hundred square foot house, a big nice house, is less than two hundred dollars. Okay, I do real estate up here. All right, a lot of the homes in downtown West Point were purchased for less than a hundred thousand dollars. Maybe they're between a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. And you're charging these kind of rates. How in God's green earth is Roseville provide water, power, sewer, electric for less money than your water bill? This is insane. This is insane. So, I'm gonna make comments here. I don't expect answers. I don't expect answers. But you got a very upset citizenry here. You got a very upset, so you can give all the charts, all the consulting. I also wanna ask another question. You got amazing staff. How come they didn't produce this? Why do you have B Consulting? Why'd you pay a consultant when you have staff? How much staff do you have? Twenty-eight people? You got office, this is a nice mausoleum here. I always wanted to understand why the nicest buildings around are government agencies. I could spend other people's money very easily. That's what's going on. That's what's going on. Look at this. This looks like a winery in here. How much did you spend for this audio system? I mean, seriously, I got another forty-two seconds and I'll be, I'll be done. But these are serious questions that we need to answer. We need to unite as a community and that's what you're seeing here. This isn't going away. You pass this, you double the fee. The news will report, you think there's a lot of cars out here? Just wait till your next board meeting. Just wait till you get more of us involved. Because paying a percentage of the housing costs in my annual water bill is insane. And I'm sorry, we're not gonna have it. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course, I have to follow that. My name is Colleen Doherty and I live in Valley Springs. As you can see, I'm in education. I drove straight here from work to make this meeting. I couldn't make any of the other meetings because I work and I commute. And the reason I commute is because I couldn't afford to live and buy in Lodi. So now I've been here, this is my fourth year. And when I drove in here, the first thing I thought was what a beautiful building. Then I wrote, I read your mission statement. To provide safe, reliable and cost-effective services to our communities. And I'm like, okay, that needs to go. Then I'm looking in the parking lot. Have you looked at the cars in the parking lot? I don't know who you think is going to pay these bills. This is not Brentwood. This is not Los Angeles. This isn't Marin. Like, who do you think's gonna be able to pay this? Not me, not me. I've been doing this for twenty-five years. And I, I don't make what you make at all, not even close. Not even close. And I've been working for twenty-five years. And how is that equitable? What happens in education when we don't make our budget? People get fired. Wages get cut. Insurance premiums go up. That's what happens in the real world. Our, our buildings are not this nice. I work in a school that was built in nineteen seventy-seven, okay? So I don't understand how you guys can sit here and expect this community to suck this up. It's not gonna happen. What's gonna happen are all the people who can't afford it are gonna have to leave. And then what? I mean, I, I just have to think. Are you guys real estate investors? Like, what's going on? What is the bottom line? What is really behind this? Because you know, you know that the majority of us cannot pay this. You know it. So what's, what's the bottom line? Like, what's going on? That's what I wanna know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board and Community. My name is Cheryl McEwen Harper. I'm from West Point, Willseville, and I am a hopeful candidate for District Two of the Board of Supervisors. First and foremost, the very first speaker that came up here talked to you about transparency. That you're not getting information out to the public. By a leg hair, you made the forty-five days between the mailing and today. It is, the onus is on you to communicate with us. I am all over my community pages. I never saw anything from you. Who goes and visits the CCWD website just because, you know, it's fun? The onus is on you to tell us what's going on. So, we need more time. And I'm with the lady that said we need another fifteen days to be able to come back here. I watched, um, yeah, and who is IB Consulting? They're out of Temecula. They were created in two thousand nineteen. This guy gives us all kinds of information. He's basically your guy. We have no idea who he is or what his qualifications are to give us this information, let alone you. Then we saw, then we saw the, um, you know, the, the thing on KCRA where they say, well, we're gonna increase this a hundred percent over the next five years and maybe we'll use that whole hundred percent and maybe we won't. Uh, no, the answer to that is no. We would like you to go back, revisit your numbers. We'd like you to revisit your salaries, which increased one point four million dollars between twenty-one, twenty-one and twenty-two. If you are if you are an agency of the people, be of the people. I don't know about you, but we're broke. So, you guys can't be increasing your salaries, you know, regularly by three to five percent every year and expect us to do that. As a government, I am over government agencies saying, do your part, do your part, do your part. We turn ourselves inside out to do our part. You do yours.
Thank you.
And by the way, I'm done, I'm done paying your fifteen dollar convenience fee to pay my bill online. You're gonna get a check.
Yes, please.
Hello. Hi, um, I am gonna be a little bit of the voice of the youth cuz I think that's kind of necessary here. Um, I am a stay-at-home mother. And, um, you know, I'll, I'll get a little bit like candid right now. Um, my child couldn't breastfeed after six months. That means formula. That means water. For me to relax after a long, hard day watching my child and other people's children, that means a hot bath. I'm not saying that my standard of living is crazy or insane, but I think I should be able to make the choice to feed my child and relax after a hard day. My thing and my issue, and we have brought it up a lot in this meeting, is lack of information. Lack of transparency. And I kind of get that you guys want us to be complacent. But guess what? We showed up. We've been showing up. We're at the meetings. So when you guys are saying, wow, what a great turnout. We've never seen that before. Guess what? We would be here if we knew where to go. My issue is I even went online to find out the address to this place. I had to go through four different itemized parts of your website that I don't know who builds that. But it was a PDF after a PDF after a PDF after a PDF to get to the petition letter, which is not even on your website. And it's just not nice. It's not nice to be rude, you guys. And it's, and it's, it's just, I'm teaching my daughter manners and I'm teaching her how to behave. And it's, you know, you don't take things from other people. You guys are taking our livelihood. You are taking our fixed incomes. I don't work. I can't pay for childcare. That's why I stay at home and watch my daughter. She's beautiful. She's amazing. I love it. It's, you know, you know, it's whatever it is. But guess what? What you have is a room full of people that are having to return back to work that are on fixed incomes trying to figure out how to maybe work six hours a week or twelve hours a week to, to help out by, they're raising their grandchildren. They're raising their children's children. That's what we love about Valley Springs. That's what we love about Calaveras County. We are a retirement community. We came here for the housing prices. That's what we came here for. We came for the reliability. We came here for a great community of a small-town atmosphere. And you guys are going big city on us with these prices. And that's just not nice. And so what I'm gonna tell you guys is what I'm trying to teach my daughter is
Your time's up, if you can wrap up.
Don't be mean and think about others.
Thank you.
Excuse me, please, Jeff.
Please, please be respectful. Thank you. Go, go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name's William Edison. I live in Valley Springs, Rancho Calaveras neighborhood. I got some questions that I wrote down here. Um, I know you guys can't answer questions, so mainly I'm talking to everyone out here because that's the boss. He thinks he's the boss. You guys think you're the boss. They're the boss. My main question here is, who writes the check to IB Consulting? Is it CCWD? What's their, why wouldn't they give you exactly what you wanna hear? You know, why wouldn't they tell you exactly what you want your budget to be? I mean, you could give them numbers to meet and they'll say, okay, that's exactly what you need. You need twenty-five million, thirty-five million, four hundred million, whatever number you give them. It's probably what number they're gonna come up with cuz you're paying them to come up with that number. They're based, they're, you know, they're based out of, or was it? Temecula. They're best based out of Temecula. The water there, I'm sure requires a lot more treatment than our fresh water coming down, down the river. You know, their rates would be higher if you have to treat the water more. No, they're not. Ours are higher. Okay, yeah, you guys have a spending problem. Um, you got the chart with the two lines? It's not that the bottom line needs to come up to the top line. The top line needs to come down to the bottom line. You know, it's not, you, you make it sound like this big problem if you guys don't have the budget coming up. Like, it's a big problem. You gotta meet the budget. You gotta do this. You gotta do that. I hope you don't meet the budget. Cuz if you guys don't meet the budget, you go out of business. Somebody else comes in, buys the infrastructure, a better company that can run it better. Sure, I'm sure another company in line could take over all the infrastructure and run it a lot more smooth and a lot cheaper because other counties do. Other places do provide water for a lot cheaper. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Bob Slakey. I'm with, I live in Dorrington. And I wanna follow up on a couple of comments previously made. First of all, lack of information. We don't know the status of prior capital improvements. How much money was spent and what was done in the last five years? Because that relates to the fifty-one million you're planning to spend going forward. Is that even feasible with your staff? Uh, there's no, uh, two thousand eighteen rate study guide included. No, no information about debt coverage ratio over the last five years. No, nothing on audits, budgets, no rate analysis of raw water, no info on hydro. We don't know how much money is in the rate stabilization reserve. And I noticed in the budget, they've eliminated grants and the fees for new hookups. And you're budgeting no new building in the whole county, which doesn't seem reasonable. So I don't think the budgeting is right. Secondly, related to IB Consulting, I believe they do your financial statements for you and, and fill the role of a CFO. They should not also be doing the rate study plan. That should be done by an independent outside company who specializes in that. That is not what IB Consulting specializes in. There are companies out there that do just that. And that's who we should have been doing that rate study plan. But most important point is this. There's a fundamental policy flaw. You're planning to go pay as you go. That's like you or me paying cash for our houses. I don't know about anybody else here, but I don't have the money to pay cash for my house. I have to take a note out. And instead, and one of the big drivers to this increase is trying to go to pay as you go. And I think you need to look at that and go back to fund, uh, financing it. And that will lower the cost considerably. And just draw people's attention to the chart that was on page eight of the consultants, IB Consulting. If you notice in two thousand twenty-eight, we've got like thirty-two or thirty-three million dollars in profit, pardon me. Well, page eight, it's like showing, uh, you can't read it exactly, inner twelve million in profit. Which is way more than you need if you're financing it. So I think you, the, and the other thing is on the same chart, debt coverage ratio. Page five, debt, debt coverage ratio is already acceptable in two thousand twenty-five. To, to try and increase the debt coverage ratio beyond that is totally unnecessary. Lenders are perfectly happy at one point two-five. on a debt coverage ratio. So, so driving that up is not going to help us. We're still going to be able to borrow money. And so there's a lot built into this budget that's totally unnecessary and needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim Moore. I live in Valley Springs. I'm an American citizen. And with that, I have certain God given rights. And I have the right to ask for your resignation. Expect, okay, expect that there will be affidavits. I would like to know, are you guys bonded? I'd like to pull your bonds. I think you've recently, all of you behaved irresponsibly and shamelessly here and wasted these people's money and wasted these people's time. How many people out here are American citizens? Yeah, okay, that wasn't a very enthusiastic yell, by the way. Sheesh. Boy, we have the right not to put up with this bullshit. Okay. And I'm going to ask each and every one of you to serve these people papers. Okay? You can pull their bonds. You can hand them an affidavit. Okay? You can get these people out of here and put somebody responsible in there. What I see here is gross fiscal mismanagement and just outright passing the buck. Okay, you as American citizens do not have to put up with this. You have rights, God given inalienable rights. Use them. Okay? Let's see a show of applause for this. Are you going to serve these people papers? Yes or no? That's your question to you guys. Not to these guys. They're not going to do a damn thing for you. Haven't they proven that after all these years? How long have you guys been sitting in those chairs? You should be ashamed of yourselves. That's outrageous. It's totally unacceptable. You're just sitting here looking off in space while these people tell you all about their life story? Well, that's not the end of the story. The end of the story is get rid of you guys. And we know how to do it. So consider yourself served. Resign or be resigned.
My name is Christopher Butner. I'm a full-time Murphy's resident and my website is calaveras2024election.com. That's calaveras2024election.com. I've appeared before the Board of Supervisors eight times since February, when I began calling out institutionalized corruption. My associates and I began investigating in 2021. Upon careful examination, Mr. Minkler is feeding the CCWD board information in a way that is not completely correct. He's negotiated contracts with the unions and staff that have substantial increases, but those contracts are stepped over several years. Instead of a reliance on grants for projects, which is how the CCWD successfully operated so far, he wants to use rate payer fees for expansion and improvements. Today I'm putting Calaveras Utilities, Government, Business Bureaus, and Regional News Services on notice. Our level of frustration with institutionalized intransigence and incompetence-driven corruption has reached its threshold. In addition, we're done tolerating county sanctioned and institutionalized conflicts of economic interests, cronyism, and exclusionary collusion through the willful suppression of our voices and innovative business development and entrepreneurialism in favor of select support of legacy personalities, businesses and industries through the advocacy of inexperienced and I allege inept individuals entrenched in a range of leadership positions with Calaveras Government, Business Bureaus, Utilities, as well as negligent regional news reporting services. Gillian Goss's social media and community efforts combined with calaveras2024election.com has solidified a collective of underrepresented, underrepresented Calaveras citizens and business owners who have reached our limits of acceptance of the ineffective and conflicted leadership of the previously identified entities. And we are taking constructive action in the 2024 election. Ineffective leadership needs to be purged and these offices, agencies, and bureaus need to be restaffed and consolidated into financially viable and sustainable entities with a common mission to support Calaveras full and part-time residents and visitors and existing and emerging innovative businesses. Empty promises are not acceptable and institutionalized incompetence and cronyism will be removed from office. Look around the room. I remind you of a diary quote attributed to Japanese Admiral Yamamoto, who planned the catastrophic assault on Pearl Harbor. I fear all we have done is to awaken a sleeping giant and fill him with a terrible resolve. My name is Christopher Butner. My website is calaveras2024election.com. Who wants one of my cards? They're free.
Thank you.
Evening. My name's Chris Dahlgren, Valley Springs. Uh, on the, uh, notices for the proposed changes.
Chris, pull the microphone up a little bit. There you go.
Uh, we never got a, a notice. I didn't know, we didn't know about this until about three weeks ago, what was going to happen with the rates. So we, we pay our bill online and we just got to thank you for your payment. That's all we see from you guys. That's all we see. So we didn't know about this. So I, the 15 days for the waiting period should be 60 days. I mean, we need time, you know, right? Everybody needs time to, 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 uh, help get this thing changed and help, help change your minds. So with the ballots, you said there was 3,000 for water and 2,000 for roughly for sewer. When I signed that piece of paper, it just said rate increase. There was no difference between water and sewer. I don't know where that came from. What is that? You know, so there's, that's, this needs, that needs to be voided. So everything that you did with this, uh, this voting thing needs to be voided and started over. Okay, with the, um, with the boards in the past years, this place has been going for over 50 years. It seems like everybody's been kicking this can down the road where the infrastructure has fallen apart. Now we gotta pay for it. You know, so there's, there's something inherently wrong with it. And, and, and you know that. I mean, you've seen it. You, you came on, you didn't come on 50 years ago, but you've, you've seen it over the years. Um, Tuolumne County has 55 residents. Calaveras is 44,000 or 55,000, 44,000 people in Calaveras. There's going to be a $300 difference every two months between, uh, in 2027, between the two counties. We're going to be paying $300 more a month for a five eighths inch water and, and, and I don't have a lawn. I don't have, I mean, I have three plants on my deck. And I'm, you know, I'm at my maximum for water. You know, this is, this whole thing is, is out of control. Is the money that you need for future growth is, is the growth for, uh, developers, for builders that they should pay their fair. They should pay for their side. We shouldn't have to pay for that piping to go into those developments. So, and also you said that Arnold was backed out on their sewer system. Well, no more do, no more new services. They're done. That's it. It's over. Why do we have to rebuild it? It's, you know, so I propose that you guys give us another 60 days, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Jackson. I'm from Valley Springs. Sorry about that. Usually I'll have no problem talking. I want to bring up something that no one has is the elephant in the room. Back when, before we started the tier program, I was paying $118 every two months. After the tier program, and I came to that meeting. And you said the tier program is designed to help the infrastructure and to get these things done. Well, it didn't happen. Okay, then after the tier program, I started paying 277 every two months. It's not bad. I didn't argue. I didn't pay. You use it, you pay for it. Then you went to the satellite. And I spoke to the technician doing it. Says, what's going on here? He says it will be more accurate. And it's to help revenue. Well, it helped revenue. I jumped up to $572 every two months. Boy, that's revenue. So I called and asked about it and they said it was an adjustment pro and it'll come down. Well, you know, I got my bill last month. Oh, this month. My bill was $438 for two months. Now, other than that, I have not jumped up and down and said anything. But in five years, that's going to be $870 for two months? Somebody, somebody has to do the math here. You know, I mean, this is, this is ridiculous. I mean, when companies get into financial difficulties, they either borrow or they go bankrupt. And even cities, when they get into financial troubles, they don't raise the taxes. They either borrow or they go bankrupt. Ask the city of Stockton. Okay? Now, if everything is so needy to be paid right now, then maybe we should either borrow or go bankrupt. But we can't expect everybody here to pay for it. I might be able to afford the $800 every two months. But I'm sure everybody in this room can't. Because utilities are going up and people are losing their home insurance because of fire insurance. It gone triple. Some people, they just lost, lost their insurance altogether. And so all these bills have come up at one time. Somebody has to suck it in and let's do something about it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I live in Valley Springs. I'm a landowner in Valley Springs. And I am here because, uh, I find this increase to be absolutely ridiculous, which caused me to look into the salaries. And so last meeting, September 6th, I went to look at everyone's MOUs, their contracts. And what I found pissed me the heck off because not only did they get 5% every year, they got a COLA raise as well. And certain management positions also got what's called an equity adjustment raise, which was another four and a half to five and a half percent in the beginning of that 2021. And a second management person got a second equity adjustment in 2022. On top of that, you also give them dollar for dollar deferred comp matches up to 4,000 a calendar year. And you also give life insurance pay.
Hang, hang, hang on. Okay, go, go ahead.
Um, uh, health savings accounts, all those things. So when you sit and say, we've cut everywhere we can, no, you haven't. I work in a place where there is a fiscal emergency. We lost longevity pay. We lost COLAs. We lost all that because our constituents couldn't afford it. That's exactly where we are right now. Can't afford it. What's going to happen in 2026? When their contract is up and we're in the middle of that five-year plan and they're used to getting paid 182,000 a year. Or Mr. Minkler will be making 247 by then, not counting the stipend and everything. What are they going to say come that? Well, I'm accustomed to this, so I need to keep getting paid this. So it's going to cost the rate payers again, another five years at 2026. Even more what they're used to getting paid already. It was not responsible to sign on their contracts without looking at what that was going to cost rate payers in the future and what we were looking at. So I'm not just going to stand up here and complain the salary surveys using Roseville, Tracy, El Dorado, and Lowdy Counties that get more revenue, revenue than Calaveras does. To use that for salaries is ridiculous. They get more revenue to cover those wages than Calaveras does. That's not responsible. So what I propose is that we do, if you have to make a decision today, that you do just a two-year increase and we revisit this in 2026 when their salaries are up and this rate payer thing is, and we revisit all of that at the same time.
Thank you.
Matt McCray, I'm from Valley Springs. Um, I've been a resident up here since 2020, moved up here after industrial disability retirement in public service. And I am living up here because this literally is the last affordable county in the state of California to be able to live. I cannot afford to live in the Bay Area. I had to move up here, which is fine with me because I've been coming up and I've been recreating at the lakes up here for at least 25 years. I'm very familiar with this area. I decided to make this my home. When I got here, as we all know, everything financially is gone in the toilet. My costs have gone up between having to pay for propane, having to pay for gasoline, having to pay for energy. Everything keeps going up, up and up. My retirement isn't going up. I get a 2% cost of living adjustment every year. And that's it. And I'm pretty fortunate on that. You do not deserve a dime of that. You should be able to run within your means, just like I have to run within my means of my budget every month. Every single person here deserves that. It's disappointing. And, you know, it's interesting when you have time, like I do, to be able to talk to people. And when I see the water district employees out there working and replacing these meters, which by the way suck because I had to fix my side of the meter on an O-ring that failed right after it was installed. You know, okay, yeah, it works real good. In talking to them and the boots on the ground, what you're putting on is just a farce. They know when you talk to the employees, when you talk to the employees and they talk about, oh, 10 years ago, they had a chance to do this, but they kicked the can down the road and now the bills due? And that's our problem? No. No. At this point, y'all need to step up and take some responsibility on this. We all have to take responsibility for our, our, you know, just daily trying to live. That's it. And, you know, I got nothing else to do. I'll make it my personal mission to make sure that when any elected position comes up, that we work as hard as we can to get anybody off this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name Good evening, folks. My name is Mary Beth. I'm from Valley Springs. I'm gonna do my best to make this short and sweet, not take, take up the full three minutes. There's a vice idiot in the White House who only said one smart thing in her entire life. And that is that every family in America is one $400 a month emergency away from bankruptcy. And you are proposing putting that emergency in my front door month after month after month. Mr. Minkler, I have about as much respect for you as I do Mark Campbell. And let me tell you what I did as a result of my lack of respect for Mark Campbell. I no longer work for his school district. I pulled my student out of the school district. I now homeschool him. But I have to work, so I go down to Linden to drive a school bus. That means I'm working a full-time job, coming home, teaching my kid during the day, and then going back to drive somebody else's kids home. Y'all didn't give us enough time. By no means. By no means at all. School bus route that I drove here in Calaveras County pulled up to Observation Point at New Hogan Lake four times a day. Mid-January, that lake was full. By the end of the January, it was empty. It never got full again. Irresponsible management. That's what all this comes down to. Irresponsible management. Your lack of responsibility, your lack of responsibility does not create Calaveras citizens' emergency. You have thousands of people who've shown up today. Please don't look at the clock while I'm talking. I've shown you the respect by coming here. Please show me the respect that I deserve as well. You have thousands of You have thousands of people who are more than happy to be a citizen oversight, to review BS reports that come back from some company that knows nothing about our community. I moved up here three years ago, and let me tell you something. The person who sold me my property wanted to make sure what kind of member of the community I would be. So I wrote a letter. But the way you're doing things right now, I'm going to have no problem selling my property to the next pot farmer for an illegal gross sitting on Vista de Lago.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tim Bork. I'm from Copperopolis. Um, I'm going to start off just by reading a couple of things that you guys have in the key requirements for Prop 218. "calculation of rates. Rates must be calculated based on the actual cost of delivering the service and cannot exceed that amount." Number two, restricted revenue. Rate revenue can only be used to provide the services for which the rate is imposed. The gentleman that was up here in the red cap that said someone wants to get to numbers, I'm going to get to numbers. The, the profit that CCWD will be collecting over the next five years if this rate increase goes into effect is just shy of $19 million. Why do we have to put money in CCWD's pocket? When they can just learn how to cut costs? I'm not going to talk about salaries because that's not the right thing to do, in my opinion. But I think that this board needs to look at what you're trying to do. I'm like, I'm like the gentleman in the red cap. I might be able to afford the increase, but I'm here talking about every single person here that's on a fixed income that cannot. I have people in my neighborhood, my friends, my neighbors, who I consider family, that I know this will hurt. It will make them want to move from our great community that we live in. Let's not make that happen. Do your job. Do not pass this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hongmei. I moved to Valley Spring two years ago because of beautiful lake. We love water. But on the day I received the mail from CCWD, I was shocked. So why they use excuse of shortage of water to raise the money? And then I quickly went to the website. The first time I went to the website, like this one said, if you not get pissed off, you'll never pay attention. That is the first day I pay attention to CCWD. I dig the lots of information most of people already said. So I want to say one fact. That is, on the day I went to the website, I see um, the date for protest was September 17 on the website. And I put that day on my calendar and waiting for later to come in. So today I almost missed the meeting. Also, I told my friend. So I just want to know, this is fact, I did not make anything. I don't know how many people missed this meeting. I'm fortunate I did not miss. So this number one thing I want to bring up. Hopefully, we could have another meeting to make up. I believe lots of people missed this one. And second, I, I read this one and the late button said, the raise that allocate fairly among property owners, those who benefit from the service should bear a proper rate share of the cost. So this is all the people said of this. I want to know how could this to be approved by, um, you know, property owners, not just by this paper, you know, everybody said enough. So, and also I dig that too. Uh, this company is not local. I don't know how much they know more than our homeowners, homeowners know this is the proper share of the cost. Uh, that is my question. And, uh, yeah, lastly, I'm thinking, if this is a game, could you give us another chance, no matter 30 days or 60 days? And let people who vote for this one uh, is a proper share of the cost. So anyway, so it's not fair. You say right now, we do not have 51% to protest, right? If you give enough time and you let us to vote, is this one correct? If you could collect 51% of people say, oh, this is right. This is a thing very, you know, appropriate, then we will not protest. I don't know if this works or not because I'm new to this system. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Regina Partain. I'm from Copperopolis. I've lived in Copperopolis for 22 years, for 22 years now.
Get a little closer to, or pull it closer. Thank you.
There you go. So I have, um, my concerns is that we have a lot of elders, elderly, um, that live in Copperopolis. Um, and one of the things is they are all on a set income. And every time they get a colon of, an increase, then the county or another entity or no utility ends up increasing as well. So to me, I think that's unfair because our elderly is not able to really afford. And with these increases, is they going to be able to really afford the, to stay in their place that they've lived in or that they retired to? One of the other things is the resources aren't out there anymore for assisting with utility bills anymore. Right now, ever since COVID, they had, had a lot of assistance going out there, but now that it's kind of slowly going away, so are the resources. And so unfortunately, those who do have or on set incomes or on disability or are literally just can't find a job. And the county is running out of money as well, so they're limiting who they're giving their funds to as well in assistance. That, how is these increases going to affect them? Not only that, as property owners who try to assist and keep our rent low enough for them to be able to afford to live here, then now we're going to have to increase it because of the cost of the, of the water. I had called and inquired as soon as I got this notice in the mail, you know, which I received 38 days prior to this meeting. And when I called to ask them, can I see the report? I'm requesting for the report so I can see what average income were they looking at for our county when they looked at these increases? Because if you go and look and ask and see what were they looking at Bay Area's? Were they looking at San Bernardino's, um, income? What income were they looking at with these increases? So my concern is the fact that we haven't done our total due diligence to see how is it going to affect our community? But not only that, how's it going to affect our county in making these increases? Do you want people to actually leave this count, this beautiful county that we live in? I don't. I don't want to leave, but because of these increases coming in by 2028, I have worked for the Department of Corrections, which we don't have high income right now. Even us just negotiating our budgets for our contracts, we were barely able to even get a 3% increase in that. So with that being said, the increase that I'm going to be getting, I'm now going to be paying out to here. The, the other thing is this. One of the, um, individuals had already talked about the increases that you guys had gotten through the contract. Your general staff, that your office staff, they only got 2% in the last year. So I just wanted to put it out there, if we can postpone this at least another 15 days or relook at it to see, did they even meet the criteria of any of our average income for Calaveras County? Then I think we need to postpone it. Postpone it for another few. Thank you.
Lead us going over from West Point. I'm a new homeowner. I literally put my entire past three years into buying my house. And now you guys are going to tell me that my water is going to cost as much of my mortgage? What the hell is that? Pardon my French. What are you guys going to do when we quit paying our water bill or we only pay portions of our water bill? Because that's all that we can, or we're not going to have food? Because there's only food banks once or twice a month in West Point. How are we going to survive? I have two kids. I work from home. I spend no extra money on gas. Okay, I have no extra funds. I can't even do something fun for my kid's birthday because of the way that Calaveras and California is raising everything. So how am I going to sit here and pay my mortgage, which is going to come out to be the price of my water? How are we supposed to do that? Like seriously, I get 1.5% raise every year. And you guys got a total of over 5% during COVID? What is that? Okay. So I'm sure you guys are tired of sitting here having people bitch at you guys. But in all reality, you guys are not going to get what you guys want and you guys are going to end up bankrupt anyway. So you might as well just cope it now and just deal with us and cut like, try to make some type of arrangement to where we can still survive and you guys don't have to go out of business.
Thank you.
My name's Hert Durk. I'm from Valley Springs. Appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here to say that your study that you did is flawed. There's a lot of things that this study didn't take into account. They didn't take into account the economy, what's going on in the economy today. It didn't take into account for us, people that are paying the bill. It didn't take into account, the fact that our homeowner's insurance just tripled. Take it or leave it, they told us. So, you know, being on a fixed income retired, I'm already at my, my end of my budget there. Your study is flawed because it didn't take into account those facts of what the citizens that are going to pay the bill. I see nothing in here about the citizens and, and what we're up against. So it's flawed in that way. Another thing, Prop 218 gets you around, uh, a quick way, gets you to that half boat, you know, half of your meters plus one. It's a game. It's rigged. Okay? I think that I think you need to reconsider that. There's enough people here that are pretty upset about that. If you're going to send out the notice, which Prop 218 required you to, the notice right here, why not put a ballot in it? Ask your tax, ask your, ask your base here. Okay? Why not give us all a chance? You're mailing it to us anyway. Rather than make us fight to go out and get signatures, you could have put a little ballot in here. Okay, that said, are you for it or against it? You'd get a really good number then. Half of your customers, you know, you're dividing this up where you're saying 7,000 plus one was the number I heard. I know it changed a little lower. But you're not taking into fact renters. Okay, they didn't make contact. You're not taking into fact that people that are out of town that don't own their homes or on vacation for a long time? You're not considering that. There's a lot of things that you guys didn't consider. So I, I'm asking you guys, you know, you guys have the power to take this, this survey and say, you know what? We can hear, adhere to some points of it. But I don't believe that looking at page five here entitles you guys to a profit. You're going to profit. Okay? I, I, you, you still haven't considered grants, which you can get plenty of grants. There's no grants in here. Grants can be millions of dollars. You know, there's no statement of grants in here. Um, you know, the Board of Supervisors, they just doubled our, our, uh, our dump fee almost. Uh, they get our, they get 2% out of us every year on our property taxes. That went up. It's, it's like you guys, you just got some really bad, bad timing with what you're doing here. And, uh, I really think you need, as the board, you do have that authority to reconsider and maybe come up with a better solution. I understand your system is broken. You're losing 25% of your water leaks right now. Got it? You guys have been to my house 12 times fixing it and then you're installing the same darn pipe that you used, you know, previously. You know, it's like you guys are just fumbling over yourselves and you're not getting it. But you do, as the board, have the right to look at this survey right here and you guys can work it and get it to a better, number for all of us.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Joseph Zerung and I live in Valley Springs, California. And, uh, I, uh, I didn't really think I would be up here talking to you folks about this, but, uh, I'm glad I had the opportunity and I appreciate your patience. I'd like to ask you folks to reconsider what you want to do, reevaluate the priorities. I know you've done some trimming. I know there's some wonderful things you want to do. I'm the same way. I like to fix things right. I like to do it once. And, uh, I understand. I understand. But you have to work with what you've got to work with and we're just a bunch of broke people. We don't have the money. We have big dreams, just like you do. But we don't have the money. Now, if this goes through, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to have to sell their houses and move out of the area. Go to. Now, some people will just allow their houses to have liens attached. And then the natural process after that is that the, uh, the properties would be sold for a lien sale. That's not a good option either. We've moved here because we really love this area. We'd like to stay here, but if you continue on this path, you're going to outprice a lot of people here. You're going to get an altogether different customer base. They'll pay for a while, but we have to actually start thinking about how can we do things more effectively? How can we do things more efficiently? How can we trim the cost? And that's about all I got to recommend is please trim the cost, reevaluate. And there's, there's a lot of people that still are not aware of this increase because of different situations. And, uh, we did try to gather as many signatures as we could. We had a short period of time to do it in. And there's, there's one other little thing. Uh, I've heard many times, well, we had meetings and only one person showed up. You ought to be flattered that one person showed up and not a whole room full because that means we trust you. And I'm asking you not to betray that trust. I'm asking you to, to really reevaluate this thing. We shouldn't have to show up to every meeting. We should, we should get what we're paying for and we're paying for people to protect us and to provide for us the commodity that we are paying for. Thank you.
My name, my name is Winston Tal. I'm Valley Spring resident. Today, uh, I come here first time to try to protest this water rate hike and a hike. And I think, uh, the, the rules for this game is that we need uh, 50% of a meters owner plus one to vote to protest to prevent this, uh, big, big hike passing. I guess, uh, I have just one proposal. Does everyone know the budget of this water, uh, of, the, the budget again for this year? Everybody voting, everybody approving it? Okay, did we get a, did we, half of the, did we get a half of the owner? Uh, half of the meter owner approved the budget for the 2025, 23? If not, why not go, go to every resident, every owner to ask them, could you approve the budget? And then we can, uh, run the business. We should have forced, I, I think the, the, the agent should have forced, asked the public to approve the budget before they raised the, uh, rate. What do, what do public think? What do they communicate think? Let's propose that. Let's propose to have a budget approved by community by more 50 plus, 50% plus one. If the budget approved, we paid it. Our community is, is loyalty community. Everybody is, is nice. Right? Everybody is fulfilled because resident, because it's citizenship. But I would like the board and would like the agent to do the same thing. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Steve Baum. I'm a resident of Valley Springs. I'm going to speak for the kids in the community. The, uh, household median income in Calaveras County is $70,000. The proposed water rate would be 10% of the median income of families in this community. The per capita income per person is $34,000. Mr. Minko, that's five times your salary. If you ever read the LCAP for CUSD, the LCAP, the Local Commit Control and Area Plan, I don't think your little consultant looked at that. Probably didn't look at the census data. But But 70%, $70,000 is the median income, which means that's the middle. If you look up at West Point and read the LCAP for CUSD, 60% of the kids that go to school to West Point are disadvantaged economically. And what that means is when they go home, they don't know if they have shoes. They don't know if mom or dad are going to be there. They don't know they're going to have dinner on the table. They don't know. It's all over the county. Valley Springs fortunately is not, has their own little water district, but 37% of the kids that go to school there are economically disadvantaged. San Andreas, 34% of the kids, you can go look at LCAP, look, go look at it. Our school can't even make their budget right now. They're two and a half million dollars behind. And you want to put this rate increase on everybody? But you're putting it on the kids. That's who you're putting it on. That's what you're doing. Poverty rate in Calvares County is 13 and a half percent. It's 10% higher than the rest of the state. You need to think about that. Why you're putting this rate up there? I yield my time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, you guys. I know all of you. My name is Elaine St. John. I'm from Copperopolis. And I ran against Russ in 2018. And my campaign slogan was your money, your water. Because I knew they were spending money like drunken sailors. But anyway, I moved to Nevada and I missed Calvares County, so my husband and I decided to move back here. And I said to everybody, hey, you know what they're going to do? You can plan ahead for it. So I said, well, what we'll do is we'll put in mini splits for the PG&E. We'll put in solar for PG&E and we'll take Navy showers to help with the water because I care about water. But now we have this. So I couldn't even put in a cistern and reduce my water because you're still going to charge me no matter how much I use. That's unfair. Absolutely. We can, we can go up against PG&E if we're smart. But we can't go up against this. And that's not fair. I know there's some very fair people on this board. And I'm asking you specifically because I know who you are. Please, don't do this to these people. It's not a fair fight.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Willow from West Point. I was blessed with a home and a business, so I'm going to get the double whammy if this goes through. When I heard your statistics, saw your charts and stuff, I can only hear wah, 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 wah. So, you know, it went by the side. But the one thing I know for me and probably a lot of the people here, there are certain things I need, not I want, I need. I need air. Got to breathe, stay alive. We need, I need water. And most of the people out here need coffee. So, you know, water and coffee go together. But, um, what I see is my dreams going down the drain. Even though I was blessed and probably a little blessed than most people in here, I see my neighbors. I see my customers. I, I, I see people just on the street. We, we can't live without water, so please don't try and make us. I, I, I want to go that route. I got my chickens. I got my garden. Water I can't live without. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Doug McAdie. I've been here for, living here for 10 years, visiting for 25, and my wife has been visiting for 40. I'm not much of a public speaker. I don't like it. But, you know, I'm pissed off because the voting that you have asked us to do is like jury mandating. We'll put some out here and we'll take some from here so you don't get your votes back. You should put it on the ballot and go out to everybody, let them vote and see what comes back, how they feel about a rate increase. Not the shifting of cards like a Pharaoh dealer or whatever. Don't gamble either. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Lonnie Buback. I live in Valley Springs. I don't like these people. I don't like people that want to rip me off. These are cluttercracks. Him, them. This place a train wreck now. Some of these guys have been sitting on this border for over 10 years. All they've done, all they've done is allow it. They've allowed it. This guy comes in, the first thing he says that I read was, well, I'm, my biggest concern is the welfare of my employees. And the rate payer second. Well, he's demonstrated that with the big raises. We all saw it. You ain't got to be a rocket scientist to go on CCWD and saw what he and they did. I will talk about wages. Somebody else was kind. I'm not going to be kind. $80,000 and you can work at the clerk up here. A deputy sheriff is $39.81. 80 grand, 2,080 hours times 39 bucks. And you can be up here at the front counter for 80 grand if you're a senior person. This guy's collecting over 200 large. Good job, pal. No, these, these guys, he needs to be gone. Get rid of these people. Yeah, you guys, I hear the women, I hear the women have a little bit of, of thought. They told me that they'll consider it. The guys are arrogant enough, arrogant enough to not want to consider anything. So that's what I got to say. They're ripping you off. They do it at the federal level. They do it at the state level. And we ain't got enough time to constantly, like this last guy said, watch what these guys are supposed to be doing. And I think they're too ignorant to do anything. And again, I live at 7056 Gabor Street. I'm easy to find.
Mic drop.
Well, I picked a good one to follow, but my name is Rick Torres. I'm in Wallace. And I really have something important to say. I do believe Calaveras County is God's country. And God loves the people. I said, I do believe that Calaveras County is God's country and God loves the people. We're hard workers. We're sincere. We're honest. And we're serious about this county and what's best for us. Some of us have a lot to say and somehow we mean well, it comes out different. But the truth is, they do care. Some of us really don't understand the difference between a business and a utility. You guys are a utility and things are done differently there. You guys are put into a position to oversee and watch out what is in our best interest. So I want everyone to humor me. If you could give me a second, if you could just give me a second so we could hear a pin drop. I want to make a real point here. We brought you in to do your best in your job, fiduciary responsibility to be in our best interest. Okay, we understand that. I haven't seen a lot of squirming in the chairs. Seen a lot of clock watching. Want to ask one thing. Everybody out here, have you in this position to do your best in our best interests? So I want to ask you, look into their eyes, convey to them, you're doing your best and you have done your best and you're going to do in the future, your best in our best interest. With these people and limited incomes, that is going to seriously impact. I'm going to step aside. Look in there, in their eyes, convey to them you're doing the best.
I don't care.
That's what we've seen.
Thank you.
My name's Donna Magnuson. I'm from Copperopolis. You can?
Just get a little closer.
It's getting late. I'm old. My name's Donna Magnuson. I'm from Copperopolis. I, the last raise, five years, in the last five years was bad enough. And then now this, it's, it's too much. It's way too much. When I look at things like, why do retirees get a raise every time we have to pay more money for water and sewage? That is, that's unbelievable. The county doesn't even give retirees a raise. The state employees don't get a raise. That means our firemen, our police department, don't you care? If you want to cut the budget, go there. For one, if you went to every household in Calaveras County that has CCWD, they would never agree to this. Except if they were a resident of CCWD, if they worked there and you went to their resident. This is uncalled fully uncalled for. You should really give up the business and let someone else that cares take over the water. I just, I, and then there's another thing. You charge people a standing fee if they have a piece of property for your water company and sewage. Just their property. They could get a, a, uh, what would you call it? A well or a septic tank and you're charging. That's illegal. Okay? Anyway, um, you ought to sell the business and get out and let someone that really cares. And, you know, you're going to just put more people out on the streets. I paid $8,000 on someone's CCWD bill and then $4,000 during COVID. And then six months later, you tried to put a lien on my property because that bill wasn't paid too for only two cycles. This is, the whole thing is horrible. Okay? And I really think you should think about it. You should send out ballots where people can vote and have someone else count them. And then you take your 51%. I'm done.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Miller, Valley Springs, Rancho Calaveras. Guy been here a long time, almost 33 years. Jeff Davidson dug my septic. Russ Thomas was my supervisor for a while until we voted him out, which isn't a bad idea. Every politician knows that when they receive a letter from a constituent, that letter represents five to 10 people that didn't write a letter. These people showed up tonight representing the people that couldn't be here or were unable to be here. So when you listen to them, they are saying what, again, double this amount because that's how many people you're going to get at a well-publicized meeting. The ballot that you guys sent out was terrible. It was, again, miswritten and miscounted. If it wasn't addressed exactly the way it was supposed to be to the clerk of the CCWD, it was invalidated. So, and again, I got to quote that great commie, Joseph Stalin, who once said, "I give every man the right to vote, but I reserve the right to count the votes." That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Martin Hubbard. I'm the District 3 Supervisor. I wanted to start by first thanking Bertha and Michael. And I wanted to thank them when I got, uh, elected to this position for taking the time to show me the infrastructure of the CCWD. And I really appreciate it. I understand what you're up against. How, how much have you not heard?
Or just get closer.
The whole thing. Martin Hubbard, District 3 Supervisor. I wanted to start by thanking Bertha and Michael for taking the time when I first was elected to show me the infrastructure, to take me through the district, to show me what needed to be done. I understand what you're up against. Um, I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but actually after, I have to be honest and say, I've received hundreds of phone calls and emails over the last couple of weeks. And I feel responsible to say for the constituents that couldn't be here tonight, to ask you to please to rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got several more people waiting online and we're going to go, uh, in, in order that, uh, and then, well, we're only, uh, only one, one, one comment per person, but that, yeah, I forgive everyone too. We just have to be, just be fair with everybody is what we're really trying to do here. Just to be fair, we, and we don't want to give everyone in the room, we can't give everyone in the room a chance for two comments, but I do appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go, uh, to the people online. Oh, I'm sorry. Go, go ahead.
I understand from the last meeting, you guys have a lot of deferred maintenance. My question, well, I have a question that you need to think about. Okay, you're talking about two rates. One that covers certain things, another rate that covers less of the maintenance required. What happens in 2028? Are we going to be hit again with raises to cover the deferred maintenance that you're continuing to have? Another thing I want to bring to your attention that I looked at what my rate would be. I use minimum water and minimum sewer. Do you know how much it's going to cost me more to have all the work done than it's going to cost me to have the lesser amount of work? For me, using, using and saving water, it's going to cost me eight cents more to have non-deferred maintenance on your work. I just want to know what's going to happen in 2028. Are we going to get hit again?
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Deal and I live in Valley Springs.
Talk, talk into the microphone. Okay, just make, get closer.
My name is Mark Deal and I live in Valley Springs. And I want to talk to all of you for just a minute from experience. I spent 40 years in private industry, sitting on boards like you did, running businesses like you, Mr. Minkler. And one thing I never forgot is who my boss was. And my boss was the shareholders of that company. Their shareholders. Without their bills, without their, their homes, you don't have the business. My job was to run a business that produced a quality product at an affordable price that gave a return to my shareholder. I don't see you, gentlemen and ladies, doing that to your shareholders. Consultants, you know what consultants are? They're people that business managers hire to do the job they should be doing. Okay? I'm sure you're very capable people. Consultants are, in my opinion, a waste of time. They're biased because they're hired. The, I'm sorry. They're a waste of time because they're hired by the managers to do the job they should do. They're going to be interviewed. And do you think if somebody is going to hire a consultant that's going to do something different than the wishes that are set up by people running businesses? The only thing I'd tell you guys and ladies, excuse me, is you better think about your shareholders. Because if I were them, I think you're awful, all of you are pretty close to being fired. That would be my suggestion if I were sitting on the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to those online in the order that they raise their hand. Linda, you're up. Please, uh, unmute your mic if it's muted. Linda, Linda. Taiwan, Taiwanese, I can't, the whole, your whole last name isn't on, isn't available.
It's Taiwanese.
Taiwanese. Okay, go, is that, go ahead, Linda. You've got three minutes.
That's me, yeah. Hi, I'm Linda Twaneyak. I'm an owner, resident in Arnold. So much has been said tonight. I don't want to completely say the same thing. So the urgency to put a pause on this rate increase is due to the short notice given by the community response for the proposal. The only notice that you all provided customers was one flyer. And a lot of people didn't even get that. In addition to that, those who are on automatic payments don't open that if they're paying it already. I canceled mine because of the fifteen dollar convenience fee. Um, and they weren't alerted to this proposed change until the community started talking. It's important to note that it was only property owners that were provided rate increase information, even though renters pay their bills directly to CCWD as well. Yet renters are not allowed to sign this letter against the proposed rates, even though they have an account with CCWD. They are paying the bill, but they are not being allowed to have a voice in this that affects them directly. Only property owners. As for the proposed rate increase, the amount set by CCWD is exorbitant. And many people will simply not be able to afford it, especially seniors, veterans and other on fixed incomes. In my case, the bill currently runs three hundred and forty to three seventy every two months. I use very little water. This is even though I'm frugal, I'm already got high costs. With the proposed increase, my bill will increase over five years to seven hundred and sixty dollars every two months. That just doesn't make sense. I have another home in the Bay Area. My bill is one-third of this and I irrigate the front and the back of my property. And the, the water district is managed much better than this is being managed and the board works more efficiently than this board's doing. CCWD has also told rate players that to officially file a protest to halt the start of the increase, that we needed signatures from fifty percent plus one of account holders. Here again, renters weren't allowed to sign the official letters of protest, even though their accounts in their name. Finally, it's not clear what the funds generated from the rate increase will be used for, even though tonight we got a very spiffy little, uh, presentation from your consultant, but who had time to actually pay attention to this? For those of us on mic, we could actually see it, but come on, you expect us to like divert, read that thing, absorb it and understand what he's talking about? Um, finally, it's not clear. Um, when, when we approached Mike Minkler, sorry, Mike, but you're going on it, um, at a, we saw him in the community. And he indicated, we said, what are your, what are the priorities? Because these are just, there's too many. You need to be, cut back some of those priorities. And his response to a community member was, they're all priorities. Okay? Prior to my retirement, I put together many, many five, ten-year budgets for different projects. And I've never seen a budget that didn't have priorities.
Linda, please, please wrap up, okay?
Okay. I propose, I don't think the fifteen minutes is long enough. You need to, I mean, the fifteen days, we need at least sixty days. And we need a board of the coalition, coalition to communicate directly with your board, so everybody's on the same page. So I propose a sixty-day moratorium on this and that a board gets, um, advised for the coalition against this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is, uh, online Megan Fisk. Megan?
I think you mooted her.
Megan, if you're talking, unmute your microphone on your computer. Is Megan still with us here? Okay, we'll, we'll come back, come back to Megan. Uh, next is Peggy. No last name Peggy?
Hi.
Okay, go ahead.
Am I on? Okay.
Yes, you're on, you're on Peggy. Go ahead.
Thanks for having this meeting. Thanks for having it by Zoom. For those of us who can't attend in person, there's a hundred and twenty of us, just so you guys know how many people are on Zoom right now. I think that's a huge number. I want to first of all say that Linda's proposal of a moratorium, I support that a hundred percent. And I think a lot of other people would too. I want to talk about one thing I haven't heard much of tonight because everything else has been covered, or so much has been covered that I already agree with. And that is the utter lack of trust now that exists between me and you as CCWD as a company. Um, I wrote this when it was much lighter out. I'm really sad to know that from now on I will have an adversarial relationship with CCWD. For thirty-five years, I felt it was always a partnership. But you've lost my trust. I thought it was, I, I, I thought once the meters, the new meters went in, I knew something was going to happen. But I didn't expect it to be this bad and this severe. I just don't trust you guys anymore. And like, like the gentleman said, you should be happy when there's only one person there because they do trust you. That's how I felt until this summer. And I'm sorry to say that because I, I like to be a supporter of everybody local, but this has just gone too far. I used to work. I'm disabled now. I'm on a fixed income. No raises ever. And, um, between PG&E and the county raise and this, and I don't even know what my insurance bill is going to be in January because I'm a State Farm customer still. So I am in trouble. This is my safe home. My husband and I made it safe so I could live here with my disability in a safe environment, in a safe community, supported by the people who I live around, who understand what my needs are. I can't establish this anyplace else. It's taken me twenty years to establish this safety zone for myself. Where would I move to? There's no place for me to go, but I won't be able to afford my water bill. And so I'm going to say, I'm just really sad for all the people who can't be here tonight or can't be on Zoom to tell you the same thing. How many of those voices are going to be silenced as they leave Calaveras County? Thank you for your time. Good night.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Sue Martinez from Copperopolis.
You go ahead, Sue.
Are you ready? Thank you. Um, CCWD throws out the word transparency like it's candy falling out of a piñata. The website lacks so much information. Just an example, last year we were told that of projects that were happening, I went to the website and looked at the projects page and it hasn't been updated since two thousand and nineteen. Does that mean nothing has been completed since then? I know that the project that they told us last year, uh, the tank on Signal Hill has not even been touched. They had to shut it down and I've had neighbors that had flooding problems, I guess before that happened. Um, this is very disappointing, wondering what has been done with our money. And especially when I hear people talk about the raise five years ago, how many projects were deferred from the time, that time that are being pushed on to this time? I have to sit and wonder. Um, personally, I've, I've been disabled since I was fifty years old and I am on disability right now. If this raise happens, I will be forced to either pay medications to keep my transplant alive, which taxpayers help pay for, or pay my water bill. I will not have the money to pay them both. So consequently, I guess I will be forced out of Calaveras County also. And with my disability and age, that's going to be a rather tough move. I came here for the beautiful country to live in a rural area and I had no idea my living expenses were going to be way more than they were in the Bay Area. Regarding grants, uh, Mr. Minkler stated in one of the meetings that had happened that it's very competitive. And I have to question, why don't we have a professional grant writer? Why can't the wages of a professional grant writer be fit into that fifty-four percent of operating costs spent on labor? With a professional grant writer, I feel that we can collect more of that grant money and help, you know, um, with not putting the burden on the residents themselves. Um, I propose that the, the board does not okay a five-year plan, just a two-year plan and revisit this situation. And I agree with the others about, you know, giving more time on this because the law stated that no sooner than forty-five days and this was rushed by no means. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going to go back for, to Megan. Is Megan, uh, available? Megan Fisk? Okay, still not here. Uh, Aaron. First name Aaron, online?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Aaron. I'm from Valley Springs. I just want to say a few things. I know most of it's been covered, but, uh, I feel there's some things that all of you in that room need to hear. Uh, I just got home from work. My day starts at five AM. And I just got here and I'm eating dinner. I work full-time. I have four children. My wife works full-time. We have eleven dollars in our checking account right now. Okay, this is the reality for a lot of people around here. Have you seen the price of groceries? My PG&E has tripled in the last year. I did everything I could to mitigate that by making modifications to my home. I can't make modifications to my water. The county will not allow it. I work for a well-drilling company. And I can't drill a well in my own land to get the water because the county won't allow it. But you're going to force me to pay these exorbitant fees? It makes no sense to me. On top of that, the county's already tripled my property tax. My mortgage went up seven hundred dollars a month. I don't know any family my size that can absorb those kind of fees on top of what you're already looking to do. It's disgusting and I hope you all are ashamed of yourself. Government spending is always a waste. You need to find a way to cut costs, not spend more money. We can't take it. End of story. I'm done. Take my time.
Thank you. Okay, next online is RW, initials RW. Please unmute your mic. You're up. RW? Megan Fisk, are you there? Okay, come back to them one more time. Uh, Benjamin Stopper.
Am I unmuted?
Hello, uh, respected board members. We recently went through a rate hike on the landfill for Calvers County water, or for, uh, Calvers County. And we decided to go with a one-year hike, even though there was proposed hikes in consecutive years. So we could revisit the budget and see the actuals moving forward. And I just want you to think about that and possibly conceptualize braving a two eighteen again, so that you can see the actuals moving forward in the future. And, you know, represent all of our constituents. I've received so many phone calls and emails, I can't even respond to them all. And, you know, these are hard times. So, um, just listen to the people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think, uh, I heard RW. Are you ready? There you go.
Is this, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You're on.
Hi, my name is Rachel Weiss. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know and thank you for having a public comment period, that there is a hundred and twenty days to file a lawsuit if it is passed. Um, and no, we all can't afford a lawyer, but together collectively we could, a very good one. So you can email me at awiser, W Y S E R, uh, way, W A Y, uh, at outlook.com. But I will be reaching out to the gentleman who has the website for the twenty twenty-four elections because he's already established fighting government. I've worked for government for sixteen years and I was raised really well in government. Transparency and representing your constituents is an absolute must. So now I fight government. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one more time, uh, Megan Fisk? Okay, she's obviously not, not here. Okay.
I'm so sorry. I finally have the ability to connect. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, go ahead. You're, you're on.
Okay, so I just, um, my name is Megan Fisk. I represent the Calaveras Planning Coalition. We are a group of community organizations, individuals and CCWD ratepayers who want a sustainable future for Calaveras County. Um, we would like to know why the twenty twenty-three cost of study services only looks at account growth in revenues. Other water districts, even other plans that CCWD itself has created have accounted for revenue growth, including the Copper Cove Master Plan. Um, from the San Francisco Public Utilities District to the El Dorado Irrigation District. CCWD, um, has considered, other water companies have been accounting for cow, for growth in revenues. It is a disservice to the citizens of Calaveras County to go against the industry standard and omit growth in revenues from the cost of service study. If CCWD employees feel they deserve the same salaries as larger, more populous water districts, perhaps they should consider putting in more effort to emulate those districts practices. Nevada Irrigation District passes out fees by zone, in part by help to ensure that those residents paying the price actually benefit. For example, to ensure that residents of Arnold aren't paying to improve the water system for future development in Copperopolis. Which brings me to my next point. Why is nearly forty percent of the water and wastewater CIP budget going to Copperopolis? Which has some of the newest infrastructure. Well, many of the CIPs that were dropped would have served some of the oldest infrastructure in the county. Has there been any analysis to determine if the rate increase in each CCWD district is proportional to the benefits that regions reap from their rate increase? Has there been any analysis to determine if the rate charge in each district reflects the true cost of service? If so, please make sure these analysis are available to the public on your website and provide it and post links them on your homepage. Salary comparisons for other districts were provided. It only makes sense to provide COS studies and approaches that those districts take, such as districts that approach rate increases by zones rather than the entire district. One final rhetorical question. For those addressed to you for directors who do not represent Copperopolis, do you think that people who elected you to serve their district will support you for reelection if they find out that you voted to take more of their money, not only to improve their local infrastructure, but also to improve infrastructure in and around Copperopolis? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that, uh, that concludes our, um, our, um, public hearing. I'm sorry, I lost the word. That, that concludes our public hearing. We will be responding. Uh, we're going to take a short break, count some ballots, um, count some protests. I'm sorry, we're not voting here. It's a, it's a protest process.
And, and then before we close the public hearing, do you want to just make sure everybody, if, if there are any letters that haven't been submitted yet, make sure you submit them now before we close the public hearing, because I think we're about to do that.
Right.
And so I just want to make sure if there's any protest letters that haven't been submitted yet, please make sure you bring them up and, and turn them in so we don't miss any.
Okay, again, uh, we're going to be closing the public hearing here any second. Okay, the public hearing is, is closed. Uh, we will be making comments. We're going to take a short break here. Uh, count the protests, um, that have been submitted during, during this meeting. We will, Michael will be responding to a few, a few questions that came, came through some issues. And when we, when we come back, so we're going to take a short break. We'll be back in about ten, ten minutes or so, ten fifteen at the most. Thank you. Okay, we're going to, uh, we've got the board back here. We're going to get back in session. But please, uh, if you want to take a seat. All right, we're back in, we're back in session. Uh, our general manager, Michael Minkler, would like to provide some, um, comments and a couple of answers or things. And then I think Habib is going to have a couple of comments as well before it comes back for, for discussion. Uh, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, so just a quick update on protest letters. So we started before the hearing today with three thousand five hundred and sixty, um, water protest letters. And then one thousand five hundred and twenty-six wastewater protest letters. We collected a hundred and fifty-one letters. And then one thousand five hundred and twenty-six wastewater protest letters. We collected a hundred and fifty-one letters tonight. And this actually, well, addressed one of the points that came up a couple of times in the comments. There, whether there was confusion about water and wastewater protest letters. So I just, I want to assure everybody that in those instances, whether the customer indicated water and wastewater in their protest letter or not. We looked at the customer and if they were a customer of both, we counted it against both. Even if the customer didn't indicate that they wanted to vote against wastewater, or if they didn't indicate that they wanted to vote against water, we counted it against both. We made the assumption that they were protesting both. So any confusion out there that was attributed to whether it was a water or wastewater protest letter. Or whether people needed to submit to, you only had to submit one. If we saw that you were a customer of both, we counted it against both. And we're gonna do that here tonight as well. So we received a hundred and fifty-one protest letters at the hearing tonight. We have not looked at each of those customers to verify whether they're water or wastewater. So just just for to be super conservative, we know most of those are probably water customers and some will be both. So even if we count a hundred and fifty-one, all a hundred and fifty-one and add that to both water and wastewater. We end up with three thousand seven hundred and eleven protest against the water rate and one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven protests against the wastewater rate. So I don't. Sorry about that. So three thousand seven hundred and eleven water protest letters, one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. That's that's over including the all of the letters we received tonight, but even if we included all those against wastewater, we'd be at one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven for wastewater.
Michael, do you know how many have been invalidated that you received?
We have that, we do have a tracking list. Everybody who's voted can or submitted a protest letter can verify that the protest was counted. We've, the vast majority, there's haven't been that many that were rejected. I don't have those numbers in front of me right now. The vast majority were because they weren't CCWD customers. So that's, if there was a customer of a different water agency, then that we wouldn't count that vote against against this one. So, but that does raise another question that came up a few times today. So what I'm gonna do is is just hit a few of the comments that that we heard that came up a few different times. And try to try to provide some responses and some clarifications. Actually, before I start doing that, though, why don't I let Habib go for a couple of minutes? Because I think there were some clarifications that he wanted to make as well. So go ahead, Habib.
Sure. Thank you so much. You guys can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thanks so much. I just want to clarify one thing. There was a comment that we have conflict because we provide, we do the financial statements of the district and or the audit financials. I just want to point out that we don't do that and actually mentioned that was our specialty. It's not our specialty, our our actual, we actually specialize in in utility rates. So this is our bread and butter and we do this up and down the state of California. But we don't do the audit financials, but we do look at audit financials to tie things up based on historical data. That was all.
Thank you, Habib. I was gonna clarify that comment as well, because somebody asked if they were also functioning as our CFO or auditor. And and they don't. They don't function in either of those roles. They they are a consulting firm that specializes only in rate studies. And that's what we have used them for. The very first question I think that came up was whether or not we are a public agency or a for-profit company. CCWD is a nonprofit public agency. So we're not, we're not, there's no profit built into the to the rate plan. I think where the confusion might come in there is when you look at net revenue above operating expenses, but that net revenue is not profit. It's it's either to fund reserves or to fund infrastructure, construction projects essentially. So it's not profit. We don't, we don't profit here. The, let's see, let me work through this here a little bit. I've got several pages of notes and I'm gonna try to hit the hit the main points. There was some confusion about the the size or the the projects that were included in the capital improvement program. And the comment was confusing where we started with about two hundred million dollars in CIP projects. And where we ended up was about ninety-two million. But that didn't happen last week. That was a process that lasted, that's been years in the workings. The initial draft that we submitted to IB Consulting of the of the CIP plan was two hundred million dollars, but that was in October, I think. Or somewhere late last year, early this year. So that was whittled down to the ninety-two million before, well before the two-eighteen notice was sent out. The the two-eighteen notice, the five-year financial plan and the two-eighteen notice includes the ninety-two million dollar capital improvement program over the five-year, over the five-year rate schedule. The the reduction further below that is what we discussed last week. And I think that was a combined total of about eight million dollars for water and wastewater projects. Roughly about five million in water projects and another three million in wastewater projects. Those are projects that we identified where, because some of the projects are funded by by multiple sources. It could be reserves, existing reserves. It could be loans. It could be grants. It could be multiple sources. And so we looked at the projects that are would have the most direct impact on rates, especially in years four and five where where those projects tend to exist. And that's what we focused on is where there's flexibility in the CIP to take pressure off of rates. And that's the alternative rate proposal that's included in your in your board packet. The I don't know how much we paid for this sound system, but we will work on improving it. I apologize again for the technical difficulties we have. The certainly Oh, there was another comment that was made about a increase in the budget for salaries and benefits of one point four million over, just over the last year. And I just want to clarify the difference there. So what that was looking at is the budgeted amount from this fiscal year compared to an actual expenditure amount from a previous fiscal year. And so it wasn't, it's not an actual increase in that dollar amount. If you look at the budgeted amount for each of those fiscal years, the the difference would be much smaller, it'd be almost the same. The reason we had lower actuals than budgeted in last fiscal years, because we've had a lot of turnover. We've got a lot of vacancies. It takes time. Each time we have turnover to fill those positions. And so we ended up coming in under budget on salaries and benefits. But that, so comparing actuals from a year where we had a lot of turnover to to a budgeted amount for the current fiscal year isn't, isn't apples to apples. So I just wanted to clarify, we didn't increase the budget one point four million dollars in one year for salaries and benefits. And then another good question came up about whether we pay as we go for infrastructure work or use financing. And it's a great question, because it would be impossible for us to do all the infrastructure work that we do on a pay-as-we-go basis. The commenter was correct to point out that, you know, just as people pay mortgages for their house over time. We pay a lot of our biggest infrastructure projects. We finance those projects so that we're spreading the cost over, over a longer period of time, over the life of the asset in most cases. So we do finance a lot of our larger infrastructure projects, which is part of the reason why this first year, especially this first year rate increase for the water system is so important. Because we will fall short, far short of our debt service coverage ratio if we don't have that that first year rate increase in place. Which was another point that commenter made, I think, was looking at, I think, the the confusion is, they were saying we're already at a hundred and twenty-five percent or above a hundred and twenty-five percent in our debt service coverage ratio. I think what they were looking at was, once this first year rate increase is implemented, we then will be over the hundred and twenty-five percent threshold to satisfy our debt covenants. But where we stand right now, and if we don't implement that first year rate increase, we will fall far short of our debt service coverage ratios. Which is important. That impacts our ability to borrow money. It impacts our credit essentially. So it makes it harder for us to go out and finance infrastructure projects if we don't meet that debt service coverage ratio. A few people commented on why we don't assume growth in the in the five-year plan or make assumptions about grants in the five-year plan. And this is something we've talked about quite a bit over the last couple of months. The, it's a, it's a conservative financial planning approach, right? We in the in CCWD and other water districts have gotten into trouble in the past by assuming development is going to happen. And then the development doesn't happen and the assumptions that you made in your financial plan make it impossible for you to fund your industry or CIP. So it's standard industry practice now is not to assume growth unless we're sure that 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 money will come to CCWD. And the same is true for grants. Grants are very competitive. So we don't assume grants that have not yet been awarded to CCWD. We have, we're constantly and aggressively pursuing sources of grants for infrastructure funding. But until we have that grant award in-house, we don't assume the grant funding in the financial plan. Let's see. Oh, I'll address the the Prop two-eighteen question about, you still hear me? Okay, I'll address the the Prop two-eighteen question about the landlord tenant and who has who's eligible to protest. So with with Prop two-eighteen, and I think where the confusion really comes into play here is not necessarily the language in Prop two-eighteen itself. But the the language in the government code section that implements Prop two-eighteen, where it says landlord or tenant may submit a protest letter. And that is true in some districts where the tenant is the end customer who's ultimately liable for the water bill or the wastewater bill to to the district. CCWD's customer agreements are always with the landowner. We don't have customer agreements with tenants. We do allow tenants to receive a copy of the bill and landlords and tenants sometimes have agreements where the land, the tenant, the landlord has passed that cost on to the tenant. But if the tenant doesn't pay the bill, CCWD's recourse is against the landlord or the landowner, not against the tenant. That's why under Prop two-eighteen, it's the landowner that is eligible to protest. And that's, that's in the in the language of Prop two-eighteen, that's not something that, you know, CCWD created ourselves. There are, like I said, there are other, other agencies that will enter into a customer agreement with the tenant. And so the tenant becomes ultimately liable for for any water wastewater bills, but that's not the case at CCWD. No, it's, it's, so the question is, what, no, so yeah, the great question. The question is whether, and we have to be careful about this, because we can't open it up to a bunch of comments again. But the question is whether we do it that way because of the numbers in the protest letters. And we we don't. We did, we do it that way along with a lot of other water agencies that got in trouble in in the past when tenants defaulted on debt. And then left and the district had no recourse against the tenant. And so that a lot of agencies has shifted to that model where the customer agreement is always with the landowner. So that there's always, there's always recourse for the district there. So it's, but it wasn't anything calculated in terms of the protest vote for Prop two-eighteen. There, there are a lot of comments and and this is, this is the hardest part about this. A lot of comments about the the economic hardship that a lot of people are facing and and the additional burden that this puts on people. It's, it, it's not that we don't care. It's not that we don't understand that. We do. We really struggle with it. We we know, I think one of the commenters made the the correct point that there just aren't enough resources available to assist low-income, low-income families these days. And or or seniors on a fixed income. And there were more resources available during COVID. There was additional rate payer assistance that was available during COVID. Those funds are gone. Those programs are gone for the most part. And so there's just, there hasn't, the state has talked a lot about developing another low-income rate payer assistance program for water and wastewater. But that that the program hasn't shown up yet. And we we are frustrated by that as well. We do a lot of advocacy on that front. Because we do understand the affordability crisis that our communities are facing. We have a small customer assistance program that we fund with non-rate revenue. We can't use rates to subsidize customers regardless of the income classification of the customer. So we have some funds that are available for a customer assistance program. We're working on ways to provide additional revenue or or add revenue to that program so we can assist more customers. But water agencies are very limited in what we can do to assist low-income ratepayers. Our obligation that we really have to remain focused on is the ability to serve the customers and the ability to serve the communities with the water and wastewater systems that we're responsible for. So we have to develop a financial plan that funds the the infrastructure and funds our operations. And at the same time, we have to go out and work with the community and work with other agencies to to find additional assistance for folks that need it. It's, again, it's, it is, it is the hardest part about about what we have to do here. So there's
Please don't, no, no yelling from the back, please. Please just be courteous.
Okay, let me just keep going through the list here. There were a couple of, just to leave a minor clarifications here, question about whether we provide raises to retirees. We we do not. A question about whether if a letter was misaddressed, was it invalidated for that reason? We would not invalidate a letter for that reason. We, again, any letter that we received, we verified that it was a customer and water wastewater and we applied it, applied it based on that. I think that was, those are the majority of the points that I wanted to raise. So, thank you. I'll address that one too. There's a request to repeat the the final tally of the protest letters. So if we count all a hundred and fifty-one letters we received tonight for against both water and wastewater, we would end up with three thousand seven hundred and eleven on the water side, one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven for wastewater. The question that that was repeated a lot is the question about timing. We have a, we have a budget deficit this year. We're at risk of not meeting our debt service coverage ratio currently. Delay in, and we did already delay this process. We were scheduled to to take this in June so that the the new rate would go into into effect in July. We, at the request of our board and the the need to reevaluate, we went back and revisited our capital improvement program. We went back and made additional budget cuts. We found everything there is to cut and we cut it. Anything that we have an option to cut. There's a lot of, again, a lot of our cost increases are not things that CCWD controls, just this is the way cost increases are affecting everybody. So we went through an extended process to develop a plan that is as lean as we can get it and but still responsibly funds the district. So that we can provide the water and wastewater service that our communities depend on. So at this point, I think we're, we, it would, it would put us further in the hole if we don't adopt it, rate increases, it'll fund the district. But it was also, the point was also made a couple of times, I think, that whether or not, you know, once, once a rate schedule is increased. Whether we have to continue to implement those, those maximum rate increases that are included in the rate schedule. And the answer is we don't. We, so if a, if a, if a rate increase, so the rate schedule that we adopt. Is the maximum amount that the that the rate can go up every year, but it's a ceiling, it's not a floor. And this board in the past, in the recent past, has exercised that discretion to not adopt a full rate increase that was on the schedule. And we will evaluate that every year. If there's any possible way that we can adopt a rate or implement a rate that's lower than what's in the the proposed rate or in the rate schedule. We're gonna do everything we can to come in under those those numbers. So the, that's why I think from a financial planning standpoint, the, it's, is, is, as tempting as it might be to adopt a shorter rate schedule. Or or delay this process, from a financial planning standpoint, we'd really like to get the revenue in place that we need to fund the district. So we can continue to go out and get grants, continue to go out and get low interest the revenue in place that we need to fund the district so we can continue to go out and get grants, continue to go out and get low interest loans that will help take pressure off of rates. And then do everything we can to not have to implement the rates once they're, once they're adopted. That's, that's the, the work of staff. That's the, that's the, that would be the objective that we have once a rate schedule is adopted. Regardless of, of what the maximum threshold is.
Okay, Michael. So, excuse me. Please be courteous. Are, are anything further?
Yeah. I mean, I think doing it in an annual basis would put us in this, this mode again right away. And we already, like I said, 218 is a, is a, is a state adopted framework that we have to adopt or that we have to follow in order to go through, uh, in order to increase or adopt increased rates. We are going to though, every year evaluate whether we have to implement the rate that's adopted. And that is, it's, it's a more efficient process. It's just as transparent. We still, we, everything we do, we do in, in clear view of the public, our budget process, um, are, every year when we evaluate the rate increase that needs to be implemented, all of that will be done through open public meetings here and encourage participation in those meetings. But it, it would, it would make it difficult for us to plan more because a lot of our projects are, they take years to develop. They take years to design. They, once we get into construction, they take years for us to complete. These are, these are complex projects that take a lot of financial planning. And so if we're only adopting rate increases on an annual basis, it makes it, makes our job much harder. It makes it, in some cases, we won't be able to fund projects because we won't have any revenue certainty more than one year out. So funding infrastructure projects that way would really limit what the district can do and it would end up ultimately costing us more. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Um, okay. We're, as part of this process, we're still on our agenda. We're, uh, the public hearing has been, has been closed. The conversation now moves up to the day, to the board for, for discussion. I just reminder to turn your microphones on so that everyone can hear, um, looking for comments from the board. Anyone like to start?
I will.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I usually do. Um, I want to let everyone know, I listened to every one of your comments. I wrote down a lot of them and, um, the truth is I feel the same way that you do about a lot of comments. One of the biggest things I heard was trust and that you trust us to do what we're supposed to be doing. So, um, I just want you to know, I, I hear that. I have a concern with so many comments that were made about the, uh, they didn't get the notice on time, didn't get it at all. So I would be open to postponing, however, I know what that entails. But I also would be open and probably the only way I would get on board with an increase would be not doing any more than approving year one and year two. And then, um, let's say, so year two would be 2025. We have the model for the rate study. We would do our own in-house rate study. You know, say January, February of that year two to determine where we're at, where we're at. We would have, um, actual information, like we have some concerns with, we're, we're, we're assuming that there's no growth. We're assuming, you know, we're not going to have grants. So if we did it on a annual or a two-year basis, at least we could have some actual numbers, whether it's revenue side or expense side and see where we're going.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
I just want to, uh, speak to the fact that there's, there's actually two proposals here today and I think it's gotten lost. Uh, the board came to, uh, to, uh, uh, staff, um, last week and, or actually before that, but we, we requested that they, that they take a look at, at revising the list of projects. For the most part, uh, this, this rate increase is project driven, cost of project driven. So we reduced those projects by, was it eight million? Combined water and sewer. So there's actually, I mean, I think everybody here thinks this is an all or nothing pro- proposition and it isn't. So I just want to make that clear and I, and I appreciate Cindy wanting to reduce it down, but I would like to, and, uh, uh, before I make a motion, I'd like to, you know, have the board's, uh, uh, thoughts, but I want to go to the alternative plan, which is, uh, less. And as it, as it is proposed on the original cost of service for, uh, for the water, it goes 21, 18, 16, 16, 15. Now on the alternative, which is, uh, 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 we're going to defer some projects. That doesn't mean that, that we, we still don't need to do them, but we're going to try to take a little more time. Because there are a lot of unanswered questions. I mean, it's chaos out there right now. Interest rates, inflation, uh, I mean, who knows what's going to happen? Growth is another thing that, that I think everybody thinks that we should, uh, apply for growth. You know, we haven't always grown in this county. I believe the county is shrinking. I think for the last few years, the county has been shrinking population wise. Uh, we, we've also gone through that with, we've also gone through that with, uh, with foreclosure crisis. I mean, interest or interest rates right now at seven percent. I, I personally, I've been a builder all my life. I don't think we're going to see massive growth, but it could happen. And so that's why I would like to go to the alternative, uh, plan. And I also want to modify that even farther down than is proposed by staff. So I don't know if the rest of the board wants to hear that motion, but I would make it if you would like.
Actually, um, I have a question. You're talking about the percentages.
Yeah.
But this whole time I see we have a bait rate, a base rate and a variable. And now I'm looking at percentages when can we at least have the base rate that you're, um, recommending. And so just using the percentages of the two combined, can we look at it that way?
So the percentages are, are based on the revenue generated from the rate increase, the, the base rate and the variable tier portion of the rate are tied, are they connected? And so you can look at the percentages and, and it would adjust both the base rate and the tiers proportionately, but it would, we would have to, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Habib, feel free to jump in, but I think we would have to reevaluate the cost of service if we, if we were to do it any other way.
Yes, that, that is, that is correct.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I mean, what, what I want to do is provide us the ability to complete some projects and I, I, I represent Rancho Calaveras. One of the big projects that's on the list right now is the AB transmission line and, and it's a very important project. You know, we've had the Patterson fire that went through, uh, Rancho Calaveras years ago. And we had another one in 2018 that really drew down our, uh, the tank up there on Usher. What this pipeline will do is it'll take all the pressure off the current line, which has every house, all those laterals. So you could imagine if there's a fire in Rancho Calaveras, uh, this summer and people are out there using water and all of a sudden the tank goes dry, we can't fill it up and that tank goes down. And then we can't use it. This is a very important project. And unfortunately we didn't get to it years ago when it was only $4 million. Now it's over $12 million. But it's absolutely important for Rancho Calaveras. That's the area I represent. We've spent a lot of money up country fixing bad pump, bad pipelines over the years. Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's our turn and, but it's going to cost. But, but we have to provide the adequate infrastructure to protect our houses, our families, everybody. So anyway, I'm going to make the motion if it's okay.
Could I, could I have, just a question? I personally would like to see a drop from 22 to 18. And I believe
In regards to what?
First. Yeah.
First year.
The first year. Because, you know, I, I, you know, I said, I ask, can we do what we have to do with 18? And the response was yes.
Well, to clarify, so the, the first proposal that we had was 25% in the first year. The board directed staff to revisit that and, and, and try to do everything we could to get it under 20% in the first year. And we tried everything we could do to get it under 20% in the first year. But without, and that was after significant budget cuts without. But by doing that though, we would fall short of our budget, um, this year and we would jeopardize our debt service coverage ratio. So that's why even after the board had asked us to come back with something under 20%, we unfortunately still came back and said 22% is what we need in the first year. So
Believe the, on the alternative method, it's 21%.
It's 22 in both. Sorry, no, it's 22.
What? Still 22.
Yeah. All right. It's, um, then now that's not to say Director Underhill that, you know, if that's what the board adopts, it just means Staffton has to go back and make further budget cuts. And where we are, the process that we already went through was evaluating the budget line by line and cutting where we felt like it was, uh, responsible to cut. Cutting, cutting further, there's, there's trade-offs. Um, and so that's I'm reducing this.
Can we mute, can we mute online? That's, uh, okay, thank you.
Director, I just want, you know, I'm, uh, we're only talking water here. I have a proposal for sewer as well. But next year, what was proposed was 18, I want to bring it down to 12. The next year after that was 16. I want to bring it to 13. The, the next year after that, the fourth year was, uh, 16%. I want to bring it down to seven and seven. And I want to do that because I, I hear what everybody says here. You know, we, staff has to get lean. I mean, I, I know that they are, but we want to make them work hard and stay lean. And that's why, I, I mean, this, we may have to come back in year three. I mean, who knows what's going to happen? But again, interest, uh, the economy, uh, there's all sorts of things that could change. I mean, we may get a ton of grants. I mean, we're really good at the grant thing, but counting on a grant is a lot like buying the ski boat because your uncle's sick. You know, it's not necessarily a good financial idea.
Okay. So read me your proposed rate increases.
It sounded like it was the basically the same as the alternative rate proposal, except in the last two years, it would be seven and 7%.
Okay. So you're saying still stay with 22?
22, 12, 13, 7, 7.
22, 12. Page 14 of the, uh, handout from the consultant will give you most of it except for the seven and seven. Yeah. No, no, I haven't, but I just want to. Can somebody tell me what that 7% number would be or no?
This.
Dollar.
Yeah.
Hey, Director.
If I get a second, otherwise
Let, uh, we'll let, let Director Thomas and I'd like to say something before we get, before we entertain a motion and Jeff, and Jeff, you can come back and make, make your motion. But let's, let's listen to Director Thomas and I'd like to say a couple of comments too.
All right. If, uh, if I could just have your kind attention for a second.
Can we take the conversations outside, please? Thank you.
This, this is, um, oh, hearing all the comments about, uh, how irresponsible that this board has been over the last recent years. Um, and it, it, it's, it's hurtful when, uh, all of us work as hard as we do to represent you as best we can. Um, and it's kind of a paradoxical situation where we hear, you know, if you had done your job better, we wouldn't be in this financial predicament about being, you know, um, under, underfunded for this first, first year. But who could have known? And how, how many of us had the crystal ball that could have, could have seen the petroleum prices go up, the electrical, um, utility prices that we pay here at the district, although we, we get a very good rate on it, but it still went up over a million dollars last year. So we, um, um, I, I just want to stress that, that, uh, you know, we, we do a pretty good job. I think I'm very proud to serve on this board. I, I appreciate the efforts of each and every one of my fellow board members. There isn't one of us up here that, uh, doesn't, hasn't lost a lot of sleep over this. I agree that the rates are too high. They're, they're really, uh, a shock. Um, I'm, I'm looking at the lady in the back that was saying this when she was looking at the, the, um, the, all the Platts and, and the representations from IB that she, she heard wah, 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 wah. So that was, that was pretty good. I, I felt myself feeling a little bit the same way. However, I want to point out to you that the board, that we're not experts in this. I mean, it's like, we, we read those reports and it's like, after you've gone to the doctor and you've gotten your blood work and your, and your doctor says, you know, it looks like you're, um, you know, you're, you're not watching your blood pressure, you're not watching, you know, these various things that maybe in my case, a PSA or whatever. But if you don't pay attention to what the experts are telling you in the form of these reports, then we certainly are not doing our job. So I'm very much inclined to agree with our, um, accounting staff and the general manager when he says, we, we've got to have 22% in the first year. I, I really, um, I am in kind of lockstep with, uh, Dr. Davidson by saying that we, we need to pay attention to the, the fact that although we didn't get enough protest letters to throw all of our work out, it's not lost on me that there's a lot of people that, uh, if they'd have just had, uh, another couple of months, they could have gotten to the 50% plus one. But where would that put us? It, it, it would be really very unfortunate that if the, um, the, the, the activities of the board and, and our ability to do work and work for you and keep the water flowing for you, it would be compromised or put into jeopardy because we didn't have enough money um, in revenues to, to make it happen. Uh, I was going to propose that we go three years only. And because I've always, I've, I've been bothered from the very beginning that we weren't acknowledging the fact that we have been successful in the past getting grants. We will be successful in the future getting grants, yet there's nothing in those numbers that would acknowledge the fact that we're going to get money in year four, five for the grant. So I was just, I was prepared to say, let's, let's do another 218 after the third year. Um, and maybe that, that would, uh, uh, that's a little bit more radical than what you were proposing going seven and seven, at least, uh.
But we could, we could still do that. If we have to, we will.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, I got a couple of comments.
Well, explain, explain what you mean by we could still do that if we have to.
The only reason I put the seven and seven out there is, is that if we are successful, if we do, if we are successful with grants, if interest all of a sudden drops and then, then we don't have to go back and do a prop 218.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's like hopeful, you know, it's not the greatest way to budget, but if, if indeed we are as successful as we have been in grants, you know, again, we can't count on that, but, but we are good at it. If interest rates drop and we get loans at a better rate, if construction costs drop, then maybe we don't have to do it at the 7%. So, cause, cause the way they had it budgeted before was pretty much bad news for the next five years, you know, and I mean, we want to be hopeful, but we don't want to be stupid about it. So that's why I wanted to keep a little in there because if we are successful, like, and, and if we have growth, all the things that people have asked us about. I think if, if we run the debt or run, run the table and it's all good, then we don't have to come back and do a tech tweak.
Okay, I got a few, I got a, I have a few comments I'd like to add in here before we take a motion and continue on. It seems like we got a good idea from a couple of directors here and I'm not in disagreement at this point at all. I do certainly feel the, uh, economic hardship that's being put on a lot of our customers, our constituents, our friends. Um, that's, uh, that, that's tough to listen to tonight. Uh, and, and I know it's true. It, it, it is. The, um, the uncertainty that we have though is, is about grants. We, we've heard that over and over. It's, it's about grants. Are, are we going to get grants? Yes. Heck yes, we're going to get grants. I know we're going to get grants and we don't know, just don't know what we're going to get. So there is an uncertainty there. We are, we are going to have growth. Uh, we've all, almost always had growth, but what, what is the growth that we're looking at? Um, or we're, part of our big plan here is to go out and, and take on more debt in year three. Are interest rates going to keep on hiking? We're not going to be able to do that if they keep on hiking the way they are, even if they stay where they are, we're not going to be able to take any debt. There's so much uncertainty going for, going forward. Um, I, I do, I, I've heard the word compromise tonight. I, I agree. There, there should be a little bit of a compromise here. The year one is, is almost impossible to, to, to touch. Our being able to, it's our credit rating, being able to take on debt in year three if rates are, are available and, and satisfactory for, for that, we wouldn't even be able to do that. Our, our credit rating would be, would be terrible. I'm in total agreement with year one, um, the way it is, only the way it was last week, we had a meeting on Wednesday. And we did drop that $8 million off of our CIP. We, we had all these town, town hall meetings. We, I, I think we did listen. I think this board is I think this board is showing you from who's spoken, all of us has spoken so far. There was, there is a lot of listening going on. And I think we are, we are gonna make a little bit of a compromise, compromise here. I can, I can feel it. Um, the, this, the, the deferred, excuse me. Please be courteous, please.
Okay.
The deferred C I P rate, the table that was prepared last, last week includes twenty-two, twelve, thirteen, thirteen and thirteen. And I think, uh, Director Davidson is, uh, is proposing the first three years. And, and, and think about it, after the first three years, we can go back to a two eighteen process. That's still possible. This could be the other thing we can do is when one of those years get here, if we're in a different position, we do not have to implement the full, um, the, the, the full amount that's been approved tonight. We can implement part of it, and this board has done that, done that in the past. Um, I'm in total agreement with, uh, fifty percent increase on year four and five in water and in, in wastewater. Um, and, and the full, full proposal in a deferred C I P, the eight, with the eight million dollars of C I P taken off in years, uh, um, that, the, in the, the, it's called, uh, our, our, uh, package that calls it the deferred C I P rates. And that's the rates that were proposed last, last Wednesday.
But that's not what I'm proposing. I'm proposing less.
And, and I'm in total agreement with, uh, with that in year four and five.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Well, yeah, could I have one more comment, please? I just want one more comment.
Go ahead.
Twenty-two percent of your base rate, what does that mean to each one of you? That's, that's what's gonna be critical to me, because it, that's, I'm gonna be affected also, you know? And I don't like to, you know, have you feel sorry for me or anything, but I'm a widow. I'm on a fixed income. I know what gas costs. I know what food costs. So that's why I'm saying what this, uh, twenty-two percent of your base rate mean to you?
Cindy, do you have any?
I still think we should only do approve years one and two. We have the model.
Mm-hmm.
And we have the model, so we could do our own two eighteen and like I said, in January of two thousand twenty-five, we can do it in plenty of time to make any changes, but we'll have a little bit less unknowns, I would hope, including, you know, what is the interest rate if we want to borrow? Um, are we getting any grants? You know, I, that's what I would support. Um, I appreciate that Jeff, um, lowered the last two years, but I am not in a favor.
The last four years.
Yeah. It, well, I, I've still, I, I, I don't want to adopt anything more than two years. We have the model, so it won't cost us anything other than a little bit of labor. We'll have actual numbers to punch in there, and if you guys can't do it, I would be willing to do the data entry on that model. But I just, I just think it's the right thing to do, not, not do the full, um, even three or five years. We have, we'll do the, and I was even okay at the twenty-two and eighteen for years one and two. I crunched the numbers. I know it's a little higher, but.
So you're back, you're on the original.
Well, I like the twelve percent better. The twenty-two is, um.
Okay, we'd like to entertain.
That's what I would motion. Shall I do so?
We'd like to entertain a motion here.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve years one and two of the base and the variable and then revisit using the models that we have to do another prop two eighteen study in January, February or so of two thousand twenty-five and see what we need to be for year three.
So that your percentage for twenty-three will still be twenty-two.
Uh-huh.
Your.
The deferred one, the deferred rate, so twenty-two for year one and twelve for year two. Do I have a second?
Okay, we're looking for a second. If we don't have a second, do we have another motion?
Oh, I, I'll second.
Yes.
Only three. You know, to me, it's like we get a little bit of your recommendation, Jeff, and ours. We're just asking.
Compromise.
Visit, yeah, I, I compromise, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, I'm hoping that come year three, we're doing good, the economy's all doing good, we got some grants and that's all really good. But if not, we can still revisit where we need to be to stay on track, to do the projects we need to do. Um.
The, the issue I have with that is most of these projects are not two-year projects. We need to have the ability to prove to any lending institution or, or even contractors that, that we're gonna have the money to pay them throughout the, uh, I mean, they're, they're not simple projects. They were not, they're not necessarily gonna be done in two years. I would rather, and, and don't kid anybody out in the audience that we're not gonna be coming back at thirteen percent or something on the third year any.
And that.
It's gonna go away.
And that could be, but at least we hope to have a little bit more information. Have we secured any grants? Um, are there any grants out in the pipeline? They may not be available to apply for, but we know the state's working on them. Um, are the interest rates going up or down? Um, you know, I mean, I thought we said year one worked on the debt service.
You know, you're saying the same stuff I know. I just want to have a longer planning window for, for, for staff to actually build some of these projects. I mean, I'm being, you know, if I'm being selfish for trying to get my A B transmission line, so be it. I mean, it needs to get built, and I want to make sure that they, we have the funds to do it. And we're not kidding ourselves if we don't think there's gonna be a rate increase on year three.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm kind of, I am definitely, uh, in, in agreement of approving a little bit of a longer um, here with the, with the knowledge that we know we don't have to implement them, will we, when the time gets here.
Well, we have a first and a second. We could take a vote, see what happens.
Okay, we have a question here. I'll call for the vote.
And, and that sounds, and sound, that sounds so great, like we don't know. We don't know what can happen. And it's just, I, I can't vote on that. We don't know.
Yeah. And like he said, though, you know, we're gonna have to, we're, we're delaying some of this, but yet we're moving forward. So in year three, we're gonna have to revisit where we land, if this is approved, what I proposed. So I'm not saying it won't happen, but we're hoping that the economy starts turning around and maybe the project cost will go down. Um, there's a lot.
And that's a big, that's a big year, right?
I'd, I'd really look, I'd really like to rely on the board. I'd really like to rely on the, uh, the board's ability to adopt the rates when the year comes here and not do another two eighteen and not have to do this again in two, in two years. I'd rather propose a five-year project and then not implement them at, at the time. I'm willing to cut year four and five in half. Uh, it would, in a deferred C I P rate that were proposed last week with the eight million dollars off. But I, uh, I'd, I'd like to see the first three years as, as with the eight million cutoff at twenty-two, twelve and thirteen in those first, in those first three years and possibly not, uh, not have, not have any, or go back to a, a two eighteen process after three years. But as when discussion is, is, we're having discussion on this, this, uh, item. We do need to take a, take a vote. Um, is there any further discussion here?
For us? You should consider salary cuts before you consider passing that cost on to your rate payers because you're not.
Excuse me. Or, excuse me?
Wow, Megan.
Maybe not.
Well, could we? It was. Any further? Any further comment?
Listen.
Are we talking about water in this case?
Just to clarify, I think the motion is just, just water, just year one and two, twenty-two percent and twelve percent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Director Skater?
Okay.
What about sewer rates?
Becca.
So we're gonna give you sewer rates in a minute.
Yeah, we could, so.
You want me to include sewer in it? Because I'm gonna pretty much say the same thing, approve one and two.
And that's the way the ordinance is drafted, right?
You already did that. Okay, so let me amend my motion. Um, I recommend we approve in the deferred C I P rates, approve years one and two for water. Um, same with the variable rate of water, years one and two, and in the wastewater, years one and two. Is that clear?
Okay, so again, we're looking at, uh, okay. Got a new motion.
An amended motion.
An amended, amended motion, looking for a second.
Yeah, for the deferred.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Uh, Becca, please take role.
Director Cicada?
That would be yes.
Director Thomas?
No.
Director Davidson?
No.
Director Underhill?
Yes.
President Radiman?
No.
Okay, we're back to the drawing board, looking for another motion.
I, I'd like to make a motion in regards to both water and sewer to adopt a five-year rate schedule. Uh, the amended, the same first two years, uh, going, uh, twenty-two, twelve, thirteen, and then cutting staff's proposal in half on year four and five on water to seven on each. And then on sewer, uh, going back to the alternative, uh, the five-year plan at fourteen percent, twelve percent, twelve percent, six and five.
The, the, if you're looking at the deferred C I P rate schedule, first year is twelve, 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 and it's four years of twelve and one year of five is the way it end, it ended up in the, after cutting the eight million dollars.
It said fourteen on this, I had.
Right.
Okay, so I, I, let me clarify the sewer. It's twelve, 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 six and five, under my proposal, which is a reduction in the last, uh, the last, the fourth year.
Just the fourth year.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay.
Second.
We do have, we have a motion in a second. I'd like to have discussion here before we take a, a vote.
And I, listen, I just want to say I, I appreciate what you guys, I mean, it's the same. I just don't want to have, I don't want to not have a period long enough that we can actually plan financially for the projects. We have some critical projects. I mean, there's nothing wrong with what you guys proposed. I mean, trust me, if there was anything else here, I would have gone for it, but I just think we need a longer planning window. And, and we're, we, we can't kid ourselves. I mean, these projects need to be built. You know, and we have to have the financial structure of the building. I mean, it's, it's not just, I mean, we, I mean, I took notes today too. Everybody that came up, I took a note. I mean, we understand the hardship, but we can't make it harder on them four or five years down the road.
Well, I'll respond to that with, you want this planning window, what I proposed, we still had a planning window. I just threw in another step to make sure we're holding all of, all of our feet to the fire to make sure we're doing the right thing for years three, four and five.
Definitely years down the road.
Okay.
Because if we have to go on, on year three, then we do. I mean, I, I will totally support if I'm here, which I doubt, but, uh, I, uh, I, uh, I totally support having
Yeah.
another cost of service study.
Yeah.
And I do have with two eighteen, we can't look at it on a yearly basis.
We can have.
But we have the model, but I still can't support the full five, five years. I'm sorry, but I just can't.
I know, I hear what you're saying, Jeff, but just like how you with my proposal.
Don't worry.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Becca, please take role.
Director Cicada?
No.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Davidson?
Yes.
Director Underhill?
No.
President Radiman?
Yes.
Okay. It's the, uh. Okay, please, please allow, allow, please allow us to finish the, the meeting. Okay, we're going on to item four in our agenda, reports, uh, general manager report.
What?
I mean, we have a report?
No, we don't.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take a lot of time here, so let's go.
Any interest of time, nothing. Okay, next item is board reports, information, future agenda items. Cindy?
Uh, the next meeting I'll make some comments. I want to see, this was a long meeting and I have a list of stuff I would like to talk about it, but we'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay. Director Thomas?
Should I clean out my desk now?
Yeah.
Probably.
Director Underhill?
No.
Okay, I have, I have no further comments. Our next board meetings are Wednesday, September twenty-seventh at one o'clock and, uh, Wednesday, October eleventh at one o'clock. Uh, this, this meeting is adjourned.